One minute to air and we are streaming. Thirty seconds to the open. We're live.
Good afternoon. Happy Thursday, Bull City, Durham, North Carolina. We are glad to be back in chambers again this afternoon. We were here earlier today for a budget session that went really well. And we are here this afternoon at the city council work session for Thursday, June 9th, 2022 at 1:00. We welcome those who are here in chambers with us as well as those who are virtual. So with that being said, Madam Clerk, if you will call the road. I am present.
I'm here.
Here.
Present.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Holsey Hyman.
Present.
And Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Thank you.
We will start with our announcements and I would first like to wish our heartfelt condolences to Representative Zach Hawkins and his family in the loss of his son, I believe on yesterday. I heard today. We are sending hugs, love to a beautiful man and his family. We just want to take a moment to acknowledge that and to also ask that we be respectful of that time, but we did want to ask everybody to remember them in the coming days. So now we'll open it up for announcements by other members of the council. Councilwoman Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. I have a couple of requests for excused absences for my colleagues. I will be traveling on July 21st for a conference for my part-time job and I will also be traveling on August 4th for a conference for Local Progress. Those are the first two work sessions after the break. And I'd like to request an excused absence for each of those. Thank you.
Are we ready to entertain a motion?
Move.
Second.
Been moved by Councilwoman Williams and seconded by Councilwoman Caballero. I do believe we would still use a hand signal today. So all those in favor, if you raise your left hand. All those opposed will have the same right. That passes unanimously.
Thank you, everyone.
Are there any other announcements? Councilwoman Williams.
Might want to preempt this with looking at the schedule for that same date. I'd like to request an excused absence. I will still be out of North Carolina and won't be able to get back in time for that meeting. So I would like to request an excuse absence. July 21st.
Is there a motion?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Caballero, seconded by Councilwoman Johnson. We are now ready for a hand vote. All those in favor, if you raise your left hand. All those opposed have the same right. That motion passes unanimously. We hope you all have safe travels. All right. All right, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Honorable colleagues and friends, good afternoon to those of you in the chamber and those who are watching at home. Councilmember Williams, is that the NBC Leo date conference?
It is. That's why I was saying we probably want to look at the meeting date. That's, I think, four or five of us is going to be out.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, it seems that a number of us are going to be traveling during that time and I am concerned about quorum for that meeting. But I'll follow up with the clerk and with administrative staff to see about what the dates are going to look like and attendance for those days, just looking ahead. Madam Mayor, just two quick announcements. First off, this is a threshold meeting. This is our last work session of this fiscal year. So I want to thank the staff and colleagues for a great substantive, dynamic year for us before we pass the budget. And my two announcements or advisors, if you will. It's no secret to people in our city that part of the manager's proposed budget contains a, includes a pilot for ShotSpotter technology in our city. Part of the commitment I made was to invite the CEO of ShotSpotter to Durham to answer questions and the CEO did indeed. I thought it was important for him to come and answer the relevant, salient, very pointed questions and important questions that we have and that residents have. Those two dates that were identified were June 10th and June 13th. And we had attempted to lock in June 10th. Unfortunately, the CEO cannot attend on June 10th. On June 13th, we have a very important community meeting with our friends and neighbors in Hayti. So that was not a date that I felt comfortable with scheduling him to be here when so many of our community members would be, would have their attention focused on our meeting at Hayti. Nevertheless, I still think it's important for him to come and ask questions, the intention, answer questions. The intention was for him to be here before we pass the budget. But I still think there's value for him to come and answer the questions directly that our residents and citizens have for him. So we are looking per his schedule to schedule that meeting at the latter part of June, which will put us, I believe, beyond the actual vote on the budget. But it's still important to get his input and still important for him, I believe, to answer questions of the community. So my invitation has been extended. It has been accepted, but unfortunately, it can't be accommodated until the end of June, latter part of June. And we will schedule that and we will put out appropriate announcements as that date draws closer. Thank you for that. Secondly, much like George, the murder of George Floyd, seemingly the shooting in Uvalde has ushered in an inflection point in our country. We've had plenty of mass shootings in the United States of America, but something seems different about this one. And perhaps hopefully, the time is ripe for change nationally and locally and hopefully at the municipal and state level as well. To that end, I want to, in keeping with our traditions here, want to alert my colleagues that I'd like to bring forth a resolution at our next work session, which would be the first one of the next fiscal year. A resolution in support of a study, not an ordinance, but a resolution in support of a study to ban the opening of new gun stores within 1,400 feet of schools and daycares. This is something, a conversation that's been going on nationally. I want to thank and acknowledge publicly Senator Natalie Murdoch, who's been leading this charge in Raleigh here in North Carolina in conjunction with partners and colleagues from states around the country. It is a burgeoning movement, but it is something that's gaining ground. I think it would be appropriate that Durham would be the first municipality in the state of North Carolina to register our support of at least studying the prospect of creating a more safer zone around our schools and daycares. And hopefully this will begin a cascade or join in the cascade of legislation and policies that once and for all address in a sensible and substantive way gun violence in our country. So just asking for a thumbs up on that to bring that resolution forward at our next work session. And that will, thank you colleagues, and that will, thank you, Madam Mayor, that will end my announcements. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I also would ask if you would just let us know about the June, July 21st date. So we can.
I will.
Councilwoman Caballero followed by Councilwoman Freeman.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Mayor O'Neill. I just wanted to follow up. I had asked for council, for approval around a resolution in support of reproductive rights and my hope had been to be able to add it to this work session. It is not there. So my, my ask of my colleagues is that we will take it up after our summer break. Thank you.
Thank you. I think you have a thumbs up on that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to make sure that I acknowledge that before our next meeting, the Juneteenth holiday will occur and there are a number of Juneteenth events that will be occurring, including the open space or Bull City Open Space event over on, is that on Driver Street? And also the Juneteenth Spectacular event at Golden Bell. And so I just want to make sure I put them on a radar. And then, just to wish all of our staff a happy Juneteenth and happy Freedom Day. And I also will need to request a excused absence for the July 21st meeting if we do hold it that day. And so. And my last, last one will be just to note that we do need to make sure we don't leave our celebration of Mr. Frank Dumas off our list. And so as we wrap up this fiscal year, I want to make sure for the next, I guess, for our next meeting or what have you, we do have a chance to acknowledge his leadership in actually being a national representative for North Carolina, straight out of Durham, and representing us for the spelling bee. Thank you.
Are we ready to entertain a motion for Councilwoman Freeman's excused absence?
So moved. Second.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Caballero and seconded by Councilwoman Johnson. We are now ready for a vote by showing of your left hand for approval. Those in opposition will have the same right. Seeing none, that passes unanimously. I do think that we now have to look at.
Yeah.
A meeting date.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor. If I could just raise a point of inquiry to our city attorney. It's a certainty now that we will not cross the threshold of quorum. I haven't even asked for an excuse absence and I know for a fact that I'm scheduled to be at the NBC Leo conference. So if, maybe if you could just prepare a memo on how we would go about that or if you have any input now as to.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So the clerk and I actually were discussing this yesterday because she had a bit of a heads up from several of you and had asked me about the issue of quorum. I mean, obviously at a work session, you all are not taking action generally. So theoretically, the meeting date could hold. But I'm sure most of you want to get the information for that first meeting back after the break. So you are, you know, at liberty to determine another date that suits the majority of the council where you could have a quorum before that August 1st meeting date. I would leave it to the administration, since they run the agenda process, on what sort of time parameters they would need to make that happen for you all. But it is within the discretion of the council to schedule another regular work session.
Thank you.
Thank you. My only request for on that, and I'm totally flexible, but would be not to start before the 21st. So if we're going to look at a date, it would be after the 21st.
Would that be?
I can go ahead and share with everyone just so, that week of Monday, the July 25th. So when folks get to scheduling, I am in town and I am going nowhere and I have lots of flexibility.
And I would also share that I have plenty of flexibility on the 28th. That is it.
So we're looking at sometime after the 28th?
I was saying on the 28th.
After the 29th and we'll.
The corresponding regular meeting is the first.
Right. So we're getting too close.
So that's too tight. You can't do it after the 28th. It's, I mean, that's why I was deferring to the administration on what sort of turnaround they would need. I mean, it's.
Gotcha. All right, so I will, I know our city manager will talk with her staff and then we will await some direction from them as to what type of turnaround time they'll need. And then we can go from there. Okay? All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Williams.
Madam Mayor, I am going to keep my comments less than five minutes today, if I do happen to speak. I know I can be a little long-winded. I did want to say that considering this is the most appropriate time, something I'd like my colleagues to consider is Operation Coming Home Project. Operation Coming Home Project is where, you know, wounded veterans who have may have their amputees or have developed some type of a physical handicap where they need a home with specialized amenities. And we are so fortunate and blessed to have Operation Coming Home here in the Triangle to where they, it's almost like habitat. They build a home specialized for the, the physical necessities of the veteran. And we spoke at this event earlier this year. We just, between the budget session and this work session today, we went to celebrate this new home, which is absolutely beautiful. And I mean, from countertop heights to lower bathtubs, these things are so important and they're also so expensive. So to have a nonprofit that would build this home for free for veterans, it takes, I take so much pride in being able to call them our new neighbors. And I will hope that we would consider being a partner in this program. They do, they do, you know, accrue significant fees of getting permitted. And I would like us to consider how we can partner with them, maybe like every other municipality in the Triangle, where they do either waive those fees or have some type of reimbursement program. I would like us, there's only one or two homes here or there, but I would like us to consider that if we can bring that to the agenda when we come back in the next fiscal year.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. We had a great time at both the events going on today. It was a beautiful, beautiful time and certainly we want to consider any help that the city of Durham can offer. And it's understanding that of our close neighbors are doing those types of things. So I just asked our city manager to see if we can make it happen here in the Bull City. Any other announcements from my colleagues? Councilwoman.
Thank you. I forgot one thing. The folks from the LGBTQ Center of Durham were submitting a proclamation in honor of Pride Month for our next meeting. And I just wanted to let you know because I think it may have come in like right at the deadline of two weeks. So if you could keep your eye out for that, that'd be great. Thank you. Diana says she hasn't received it yet, but Amber has it. Okay, awesome. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
And my last comment, I promise. I would like also for us to consider that, you know, to initialize the process of having a focus group of some sort, whether it's a commission, committee, or task force on black males and men. We obviously have the data to show us that we are in an epidemic right now in our city when it comes to violent crime, gun violence, and also the care that we need to, and nurtishment that we need to focus toward black men and boys. And I would like us to consider the process that will lead us to having a focus group to help recommend on solutions or whatever directions, you know, we could take our resources as a city. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. Right? Councilwoman Freeman.
Thank you. Just, just the one addition Councilmember Williams put, brought to mind. I just want to make sure that, I'm not sure if this is the appropriate moment, but I do want to make sure we do bring forward rather a request for a vote on the roller rink, as we've been discussing in our budget hearing a little bit earlier or budget meeting a little bit earlier. And so at the appropriate time, if you'd let me know when that is.
Thank you so much and I'll be turning to, I'll turn into, for her to tell me where that appropriate time will be on our agenda today. All right, she's gonna, she's gonna give back to me. Other matters. All right. All right. All right, everybody. I think that will end our announcements for this afternoon and we will turn to city manager Paige to see if she has any priority items for us this afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protem and members of the Durham City Council. I do have a few priority items for you this afternoon. The first item is agenda item number 13, which is a contract with Legal Aid of North Carolina to administer emergency rental assistance for Durham Housing Authority residents. We are asking that the rules be suspended at the work session today to minimize disruptions to service delivery by making local funding available sooner. I also have agenda item number 44, which is an interlocal agreement with Durham County to assign emergency medical technicians, EMTs, to the community safety response teams. A supplemental item has been added to your agenda. The following modifications were made to attachment number one, which is interlocal agreement. The effective date was changed from June 1st, 2022 to June 27th of 2022. The clarified details regarding emergency medical technicians, EMTs, are credentialed. EMTs will remain employees of the Durham County Emergency Medical Services. EMTs will continue to operate under EMS protocols. EMTs will be authorized to drive city vehicles and EMTs will be provided up to four hours of continuing education per quarter. And finally, the Community Safety Department will provide Durham County EMS Systems Medical Director access to records for quality assurance. Those are the only items I have for you this afternoon.
Thank you so much. City manager Paige, I would like to entertain a motion to accept city managers' pages prior to items at this time.
So moved.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Caballero and seconded by Councilwoman Williams that we accept the managers' prior to items. Those who would vote for approval, if you raise your left hand at this time. Those who oppose will have the same right. Seeing none, that motion passes unanimously. I'm always confirmed with attorney when we have a little deviation. So I believe it is at this time that I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules to deal with prior item, priority item 13 as read by our city manager.
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
It has been a move by Mayor Protem and seconded by Councilwoman Johnson that we suspend the rules at this time. Those who are in agreement, if you would sign by raising your left hand. Those who oppose have the same right. Seeing none, that motion passes unanimously. So we're going to go ahead and vote on that item. So we will know that we have that all packaged in a nice matter. That matter is number 13, Contract with Legal Aid of North Carolina to Administer Emergency Rental Assistance for Durham Housing Authority Residents. The first motion would be to authorize the city manager to execute a contract in the amount of $713,618 with Legal Aid of North Carolina to provide emergency rental assistance for Durham Housing Authority residents funded with $463,618 in city funds and $250,000 in grant funds from Duke University. There's our motion.
Moved as read.
Second.
We have two people who want to speak to that matter.
On 13.
On 13. We have two folks who are public comments, so we will hold that open. Let me confirm with our attorney to make sure that we do this.
I see one person.
So we're going to modify that. We're going to hold that motion open at this time. And we will come back to that as we go through our agenda, since we have public speakers at this time. And I will now turn to any priority items that our city attorney may have.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. It's good to see you all, Mayor Protem, members of the council. I do not have any priority items this afternoon, but I would like to take a point of personal privilege to introduce some wonderful new additions to the city attorney's office. First, I'd like to introduce Assistant City Attorney Anne Marie Tosco. Anne Marie has joined us from seven years of service in Orange County Attorney's Office. We are super excited that we wooed her over to Durham. She is a resident of Durham, has been a longtime resident of Durham. So it's good that her commute has gotten a little shorter. She's an employment law specialist for us. She's going to be advising the Human Resources Department, but she's also going to be doing some litigation and other matters for the city. So we are super excited to have Anne Marie with us. And she is a double Tar Heel, I believe. That's right. That's right. So the last attorney that we hired came from NC Central's Law School. Now we've got one from UNC. So we're diversifying our ranks in terms of allegiance. I'd also like to introduce two UNC law students who are serving as legal interns in our office. This is Ariel Friedman and Ashley Loveless. They are doing some fantastic work for us this summer. You all are going to be seeing some of the product of their work in items that the city attorney's office is bringing to you after the break. So we are super grateful that they have decided to spend portions or all of their summer with us and we just wanted you all to get to meet them.
Welcome.
Welcome, welcome, welcome. Thank you all so much. And we hope that you have a great summer with us and we will welcome you onboard to our great city attorney's office. I'll now turn to our city clerk to see if she has any priority items for us today.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protem and city council members. The city clerk's office has no priority items today.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Now we will turn to the reading of our entire agenda. We will start with our consent agenda, but we will read the departmental items and presentation and our public hearing items. So our first item on our administrative consent agenda is approval of city council minutes. Number two, Durham City County Appearance Commission appointment. Number three, Durham Convention Center Authority appointment. Four, Durham Sports Commission appointment. Number five, Housing Appeals Board appointment. Six, Human Relations Commission appointment. Seven, the Mayor's Council for Women appointment. Number eight, the Mayor's Hispanic-Latino Committee appointment. Nine, the Participatory Budgeting Steering Committee appointments. And 10, the Racial Equity Commission appointment. Number 11, the Mayor Appointments City of Durham Port Laureate.
I'd like to pull that, please.
Mayor, I don't want to pull it. I'd just like to make a comment that starting next year, I'm looking forward to, just looking for consistency in just the reporting and how we can be better supportive of these committees and task force and commissions regarding, you know, just a little more oversight and making sure we're effective at it.
Yes, that is something I think a couple of us would like to be, know a little bit more about how all our commissions and committees work, the ones that are internal to the council as well. So I'm hoping that I have some volunteers from my colleagues to kind of spearhead that effort, especially from our senior colleagues to kind of guide us through that process. So we'll give you all time to be volunteered or voluntold.
I was about to say, I'm sensing some voluntold happening here.
Okay, and, and Mr. Rogers, our Port Laureate is on Zoom, so we, on Zoom, so we get a chance to talk to him. You did pull that item, didn't you?
I did. I don't have questions. I just wanted to talk about it because it's.
Yes, he's, he is here. He's here. So that concludes our consent agenda and we will now turn to our departmental items. Number 12, fiscal year 2022 to 2023 budget in 2023 to 2028, the Capital Improvement Plan, CIP. Number 13 will be pulled, I believe. That is the contract with the Legal Aid of North Carolina to administer emergency rental assistance for Durham Housing Authority residents. We have suspended those rules, so we'll come back and hear from our speakers on that matter. Number 14 is the contract with North Carolina Coalition to End Homelessness, NCEH, to provide homeless management information system lead agency services. Item 15 has been pulled. Fairhaven Wall Commonwealth Development Corporation of American Development Loan Commitment. Item 16, Grand Agreement with the Housing Authority of the City of Durham, Elizabeth Street Apartments, Durham Downtown and Neighborhood Plan.
I'd like to pull that one.
You're pulling that? I'm sorry, sometimes I have a hard time hearing with these masks on, so please let me know. I'm understanding that you did pull that item, okay, just to be sure. Item 17, Sandy Ridge Station Bradley Housing Developers LLC Development Loan Commitment. That is also going to be pulled. 18, Prescriptions for Repair Proposal from Community Safety and Wellness Task Force. That will be pulled. 19, Low Income Monthly Parking Discounted Voucher Program. I have that as being pulled as well. Item 20, Task Order 003 to Master Service Agreement 2021 through 2506 with North Carolina State University, NCSU, for the development enhancement and maintenance of the Triangle Regional Model, TRM. Item 21, Amendment Number 2 for Falcon Engineering Contract Number 16451 for the construction material testing and special inspections of the Mist Lake Facility Expansion. Item 22, the Interlocal Agreement for Phase 9 of the Triangle Area Water Supply Monitoring Project. Item 23, Extension of McLean and Company Contract Number 17282. 24, the Housing Appeals Board Annual Report for Fiscal Year 2021. Number 25 is the Contract for Plea Employment Psychological Testing of Police Sworn and Non-Torn Applicants. Item 26, the Contract for Post-Hire Psychological Services for Police Employees. Number 27, Amendment 2 for the South Ellaby Wetland and Stream Restoration Design Services Contract. 28, Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System MS4 Inspections SD-2022-03. Item 29, Stream Vegetation Management Contract with Ripple Eco Solutions LLC Item 30, Utility Extension Agreement with DHIC Brightleaf Casitas LLC to serve Ascend Brightleaf cottages. 31, the Utility Extension Agreement with DHIC Brightleaf LLC to serve Ascend Brightleaf Apartments. Item 32, the Utility Extension Agreement with Taff Mills Group LLC to serve Cedar Trace Apartments. 33, Contract with Benevate, B-E-N-E-V-A-T-E, in case I slurred that, Inc. for Neighborly Software. Item 34, Contract with Neighborhood Data Works to manage and operate the Neighborhood Compass Indicator Tool. 35, License and Maintenance Agreement for City Works Software. We turn our attention now to our presentations. Item 36, Excel Pilot Update. Item 37, the Durham Orange Light Rail Transit Project Expenses. And as public hearings, Items 38, the Partial Closing of Henderson Street. Item 39, the South Austin Avenue Zoning Map Change. 40, the Triangle Veterinarian Preferable Hospital Zoning Map Change. Item 41, Unified Development Ordinance Text Amendment Omnibus Changes 17. Item 42, Wabash Parcels Zoning Map Change of Wabash. Our Citizen Matters, Donald Raines is item number 43. Item 44, a supplemental item, Interlocal Agreement with Durham County to assign emergency medical technicians, EMTs, to community safety response teams. That is all I have for our agenda. I'm going to check with our City Manager to make sure that we have all of the consent pulled items at this time. I have 13, 14, 13, 15, 16, 18, 17, sorry about that, 19, and also 11. That will be the first one. So let's do them in order. 11, 13, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19. Is that what you have, City Manager Page?
That is correct.
All right. Thank you so much. And we have this thing. We have been escorted, Mayor Protem. All right. We are going to turn to our Citizen Matters, and the first that will be Item 43, Mr. Donald Raines.
Good afternoon, Mr. Raines. We're glad you're here.
May and City Council, all those present. My name is Donald Raines. I live in Durham. 1019 Sheriff Wood Drive. I'm also the President of the Durham Council of the Blind here in Durham. I'd like to speak about the access transportation here in Durham. There's some serious problems with that transportation company. And one thing that is a problem is sometimes how late they are picking you up. Sometimes that when you call to reserve a trip, it may be a long time before you can get a reservation in there. And the problem with that is because they have a lack of drivers. From my understanding, to have, for them to have a full drivers, it's got to be somewhere around, I think about 55 drivers. And last time I'm here, and there's only about 15, 16 drivers that they have. They having a problem of keeping drivers. For an example, there are many in my blind group, there's some that work at LCI Industries, that catch the transportation to work and back home. They're always late getting to work now. And then they're being docked, and then their production level may be down because they're late getting to work. Sometimes if I'm taking access to Walmart, sometimes I may have to wait one or two hours, maybe up to three hours, past the scheduled time of my pickup before I get, for the van to come to get me home. The Sunday before Thanksgiving, they only had one driver. They were an hour and a half, I was trying to get there to go shopping. There was an hour and a half late picking me up. I got finished shopping at 5:30. The van didn't come until a little bit after 8:30 for me to go home. It was a day that was cold, and it was a nighttime. There are other times that I have to wait, and there's other people that have to wait to get transportation. This week, I wanted to go food shopping. I called last week for a reservation. Couldn't get one at all this week to go shopping. Yesterday, I paid almost $30 to Uber so I can go to Walmart and do food shopping. The problem they're having is drivers. I know that's one problem that they're having, is drivers.
Mr. Raines?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I neglected to tell you from the beginning that you have about three minutes. Each person has about three minutes for our comments. Your time has gone up, but I would ask that you finish your thought.
Okay. The next problem is communication between the drivers and management and managers that needs to be looked at.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate your time here today. We have five persons who have signed up as well for Citizen Matters. Each of you will have three minutes. And please, I'm going to call the names, but if I have missed someone, would you please, if you're virtual, notify our clerk by raising of your virtual hand to let her know that you're here to speak as a citizen, not on a particular item. And these, those folk I have would be Nana Ewol and Amy Fleishman. Here with us today, I also have Ms. Stella Adams, Mr. James Brown, and Mr. James Chavis would be those persons who are here in chambers. We will start with Ms. Ewol, followed by Ms. Fleishman, and then we will proceed to Ms. Adams, Mr. Brown, and Mr. Chavis. Ms. Ewol, and I'm sorry if I am pronouncing your name, last name incorrectly. I'm pronouncing it as I see it as Ewol, E-W-O-O-L. She should be in the, we hope she's in the queue. We're looking.
Madam Mayor, there's no Nana Ewol in the queue.
It's Amy Fleishman.
I do not see an Amy Fleishman in the queue either.
All right. We will now turn to Ms. Stella Adams, followed by Mr. James Brown, followed by Mr. James Chavis.
Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the City Council. First of all, I'm going to say these three words, transit, transit, transit. But that's not why I'm here today. But in light of what you just heard, I felt the need to bring up my second favorite topic. I am here today to officially resign as a member of the Affordable Housing Implementation Committee. It has been my honor to serve in that post since its inception. Under the leadership of Co-Chairs Katati and Elder, we have, I think, created a great sense of transparency about how the housing bond funds have been used. Citizens can track the number of units that have been created, maintained, and retained as a result of the passage of the housing bond. But as the airline stewardesses will tell you, put your mask on first before you can help others. And due to health concerns, I can no longer serve on this dynamic and active committee. If you want to know about a hard-working committee, you only need look at the Affordable Housing Implementation Committee and look at the amazing dashboard that the staff has created. Look at the number of minority contractors, black contractors, women contractors that are accounted for by the Durham Housing Authority projects that have been funded under there. So again, it has been my honor. I somehow feel like I'm letting the people down, but I have to take care of me first. I don't want the staff to think they're off the hook because I know how to come and get you. Thank you so much for allowing me to serve.
A true Dermite, a trooper, one of my she-roses out there, always in the fight. Please take really, really, really good care of yourself. We know you will be back, and we'll be ready to see you back. So once again, thank you for your service, Ms. Adams. You've always been there. Appreciate you. Mr. James Brown. You have three minutes, sir, and you'll hear the beep. We'll let you know when your time starts.
All right.
You may proceed, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you to the mayor and the City Council for a chance to be heard today. My name is James Brown, and I've been a resident of Durham for six years now. I went blind about four years ago, and so I've been riding Durham Access for four years now. And I like to give a fair shot with things, pros and cons. No accidents with Durham Access. Safe travel. I go to the gym three to five times a week, go to the store. I go everywhere I want to go. So they do get me where I need to go. As the President of the Durham Council for the Blind mentioned earlier, Donald Raines, being late is a regular thing. This week alone, I went to the, where did I come from? I forgot where I was coming from, but I was supposed to be picked up between 3:00 and 3:30 from Walmart, actually, on Monday. And I didn't get home till 4:27. And I live a half a mile from Walmart. So there you go. That's one example. And then I was also on, was it yesterday? Yesterday, I was going to go to the gym, and I wanted to do a two-hour workout. I was supposed to be picked up between 11:00 and 11:30. I didn't, well, I called at 12:40 to cancel to go to the gym, and I worked out at home. So I waited an hour and 40 minutes, and they still didn't come yet. So, you know, that's just this week. But like I said, it is safe travel, and I do eventually get to my destination, but there's a lot of waiting, all right? Uh, but like I said, it is safe travel and I do eventually get to my destination, but there's a lot of waiting, all right? Um, but the thing that I wanted to mention was, what I'd like to see is a follow-up on this issue. Uh, if we can get some information on that. Uh, what I'd like to see happen is, so right now, the setup is, we have to call our trips for Durham Access up to two weeks in advance. Most of the time, if you don't book your ride in a week and a half to two weeks in advance, you can't get that trip. And even calling two weeks in advance, you can't always get the time that you asked for, all right? Um, there's another company emerged with Durham Access called Userv, right? And that was supposed to make our life easier. Well, it has not because they haven't given us the choice. So we cannot call Userv ourselves, all right? We reserve our trips and then a Userv driver will pick one of us, you know, to add on their own schedule. And if I ride with Userv, then I do get picked up or dropped off on time with Userv. You know, it's personal vehicle service. So I wanted to mention other cities, uh Fayetteville, North Carolina, um Raleigh, North Carolina, uh Atlanta, Georgia, Jacksonville, Florida. You can book your ride to go anywhere within the city as late as a day in advance, all right? I want to go to, if I can just finish one more step on Jacksonville, Florida. For Jacksonville, Florida, you can book a ride with Userv two hours in advance on the same day. And then the shuttle service, you can buy, you can book your trip a day in advance. I'd like to see that happen for Durham Access. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for coming today, Mr. Brown. We appreciate you being here.
Madam Mayor, can I ask a question to the manager? Uh, is, we use Uber and other services in the city privately. Is there like any type of partnership that could extend?
I'm gonna ask the Transportation Director to come up because we do have some private providers and I don't want to misspeak.
Good afternoon, Mayor O'Neill, Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, and Members of Council Sean Egan, Director of Transportation. Uh, so we do have a partnership with the Go Durham Connect program with Lyft. Uh, and that uh provides riders with a code where they can get a free trip within a zone established in East Durham. Uh, so that allows people to get the that first or last mile from their home to, uh, say, the Village Transit Center where they can then get a bus every fifteen minutes. So we've used that with Lyft. Uh, the program that we've set up with Userv uh provides significant additional training uh on how to provide transportation services and the needs of people with disabilities, uh, as well as compliance with federal requirements for things like drug and alcohol testing. Those requirements are well above and beyond what Uber or Lyft will uh will provide. Uh, and so we are using a similar model with Userv to an Uber or Lyft. It is a transportation networking company. Uh, but we want to make sure, uh, given the uh vulnerability of our access riders, that the people providing transportation services to our uh access riders have that specialized training and that we can be confident uh that it's an alcohol and drug-free environment.
Um, Madam Mayor, thank you. I I would like to um ask for a review of the policy that states that they have to call a week or two weeks in advance to actually get services. They are citizens like everybody else, residents like everybody else. And for us, like, I don't know if I want to go two weeks in advance to go to the grocery store. And so then they are sitting out there for hours at a time and they're a vulnerable population. So I would like to see a review of that policy, yeah.
To be clear, it's not a policy decision that's driving that schedule. It's the availability of staff um and drivers to provide the services. The policy is uh twenty-four hours in advance. Uh, but it's, the policy is not what's driving some of the challenges in scheduling trips. It's uh continuing to hire more staff. So the the step that we took in April of this year was to increase wages substantially. The starting wage uh is now seventeen dollars and fifty cents plus benefits. Uh, we've seen significant increases in staffing uh since that new wage rate went into place. Uh, and we're working to get up to full staff, uh, to get to the point where we can uh make sure that all those trip requests uh are honored and scheduled and that trips can be provided on time. So we're working through that as a staffing issue right now, but the additional uh compensation uh has put us on a good path forward to be able to do that. We're not there yet, but uh we're trending in the right direction.
So, um, thank you for the clarity um in terms of saying that it's not a policy, but I guess I took that from the residents saying that they are, their, 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 I guess, um view of how they know they can call is two weeks. So thank you for that clarity, but whatever you want to call it, a policy, not a policy, I'd like to know why is it taken? And I understand you just said um not having the drivers, but the residents don't want to hear that. They want to get to the store, they want to get to where they want to get to. Thank you.
I believe that um we we're gonna have a transportation presentation and some of the folk who will be presenting may be able to answer that as well. Would that be true of the Go Triangle this afternoon? They would not be able to answer that question. Different, different group, different provider. Okay, just making sure. All right, thank you so much. Mr. Chavis?
Yes.
You have the floor for three minutes.
Thank, thank you. Good, good afternoon. Uh, I was here this morning to listen because I heard what I didn't hear. And I didn't hear the truth. Okay? I want you to know that first because I have been out there volunteering my time on both of these projects. And Wade did not tell y'all the truth. Our rights has been violated on both of these projects because we have not had time or energy from him to let him know what we wanted in those projects. So I heard what y'all told him this morning and I thank you. But to make it more clear, I'd like to challenge each and every one of you, challenge each and every one of you, city council members, along with the mayor and the Mayor Pro Tem, to tell Wade to put that splash aside and let's start all over with the community as well as the city staff. As you all may heard, me and Keith were supposed to have a meeting this afternoon. But due to his emergency, I had to cancel our meeting. And that meeting was for him to help us start it all over with Keith. So please, I'm gonna reschedule that meeting with Keith. But I want y'all to understand, we wanted to start all over so that we can have a voice, not with, with the soccer field, but start it all over with wheels so that we all can have a voice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chavis, for being here today and for your comments as well. We will now, I believe, return and review our pulled items. And we will take them in order. And the first pulled item, I believe, was pulled by Councilwoman Johnson, which is item eleven.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I pulled this item because this is something that we have been trying to make happen for a long time, um, getting a poet laureate. It was originally a proposal by a number of residents, artists who are involved in um in the poetry community, poets themselves, who were um excited about Durham entering this space. We have, of course, a North Carolina poet laureate, and I think Carboro has one, but um Durham didn't have one. So they came to us and asked us to establish a program. Um, it was referred to our cultural advisory board for some um for some discussion and development of uh program terms. And um the folks in General Services were um working with them on that. And then we um finally approved the position, I think it was last year. And now we have a poet laureate in Durham, which is so exciting. So I just wanted to take a moment to appreciate um all the work that's gone into making this happen and Durham entering this um exciting new space of having a city poet laureate. And since our new poet laureate is online, it would be great to um to hear from him as well. And I really look forward to uh going to events where he's gonna be speaking and reading poetry. And um, yeah, I'm just really excited to have to have this new position for for the arts and and for writers and artists in our city. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And if, um, Madam Clerk, if you could find DJ Rogers online, that'd be great.
Mr. Rogers is unmuted.
Fantastic, good afternoon. Council, Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, it is good to see you all. Uh, my name is Harold DJ Rogers. I am a poet, essayist, and educator. I've been a Durham resident for going on eight years now. I am incredibly honored and humbled and excited by this opportunity and for the opportunity to spread art and build our system community within and without the city of Durham to show what art is and can be for the citizens of our city. I appreciate you and thank you for your time. And if you have any questions or comments from me, I'd be happy to answer those now.
Thank you so much, we're so excited to have you. Um, I guess I'm just interested in um if there are any events already planned? Is there like a, you know, any kind of public launch or um something that we could, that we could come to to show our support?
So there's nothing planned as of now, but I would love to plan something, a launch event and an inaugural event for the inaugural poet laureate. It is very, very exciting to me. There are regular community events that do happen. The biggest one is the um Jambalaya Soul Slam, which happens every third Saturday at the Hittah Heritage Center. So that is the regular event we have right now and that is run by um an artist named Dasana Hanu. Other than that, I would love to plan something, but there's nothing specific planned yet.
Okay, thank you. Maybe we could, um, I don't know whose the current liaison is to the cab, but maybe we could ask the cab to work with the council liaison to try to make something happen.
I'm definitely gonna charge you with that councilwoman Johnson.
Are you, are you the the cab liaison now?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Are you the liaison now to the cultural advisory board?
I, I, I am not. I don't, no, I don't think so, but we, we, we're gonna.
I'm the liaison to Durham Cultural.
Oh, no, is it you?
Who is that person?
We're gonna figure it out.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, awesome. Um, thank you, Mr. Rogers, we're excited to have you.
Thank you, I'm excited to be here.
This is just one of those cool things when you just happen to land in the, the, the right place at the right time. Uh, all of this was in motion before I became mayor. And now, Mr. Rogers is our first um city of Durham poet laureate. He is, will have a term that was set to expire June 30th of 2023. I was on the internet the other night looking at some of his information and I am just so impressed and honored that you are our first, Mr. Rogers. So thank you for all that you're doing to make world, our world brighter. And we certainly look forward to having an inaugural event where we can showcase you and your talents. So, thank you, young man. Job well done.
Thank you so very much, Madam Mayor. I am excited and I am honored to, to be in this position at all, let alone being the first. It is incredibly humbling. Like I said, it is my honor and I am extremely excited to get started.
Thank you so much, and we look forward to seeing you in person and listening. Can you give us a short little piece before you leave us? Just a little, just a little taste, just a little bit.
I believe I can do that, yes. So, my father has been a mechanic since I was two years old and he tells me you get used to it. That filters for me, nose and mouth keep fumes out, that your eyes start secreting extra liquid to fight off the hail of smoke you have to endure and that your hands grow this outer layer of skin that's thick and invisible and permanent. My brother Chris and I worked for him for one summer and neither of us were prepared for this. The days like ten-hour heatwaves on the horizon and the nights quick and fleeting as a mirage. We would pass time during our breaks by playing the game Yu-Gi-Oh. It's a card game. My dad asked my favorite cards were, and I said it was the basic cards because they form the backbone and they do all the real work. And yeah. My father, looking at them like pawns on a chessboard, says he appreciates and understands them as well, but he sees something different here. He sees these things and admires the sacrifice, admires their willingness to be stepping stones so that stronger pieces, kings, gods can be summoned to the battlefield. He sees the ability in this. He sees heroism in this and have to wonder what kind of heroism lives in antifreeze and industrial-sized tanks of fluid, these pool waters that burn everything, burn my eyes. My ears got me shivering and my sleep got me looking out at nothingness, got me closing my eyes because I'm afraid of what they might do in the dark is the really heroism in this. Or is that ideal where they dangle on the battlefield so that us foot soldiers don't forget they've convinced us we're fighting for? Dad says can't look at it like that. That without his trucking, his business, his families and a lot of others might not be able to eat. It's not glamorous, but it's necessary and yeah. Maybe he's right. Maybe I feel like I've outgrown his shadow. Maybe I feel like I'm a little too good to be anything like him, but hustle my way to a college degree and all of a sudden I'm too good to inherit my father's legacy, a million generations of truckers and mechanics and stockboys and farmhands and day laborers and infantry and slaves and sacrifices. So toughen up in the last couple more months on my last day, I say, you know, I've realized something, Dad. These cards, these pawns, we sacrifice them because if we didn't, they would all rise up against the dealer in a heartbeat. So instead, we pit them against one another. Tell them any I put for the best, tell them to stomp one another on the way to their own dreams, fight to become gods and most likely die on the way there, never realizing that they have become the foundations of their own defeat, kingdom built on their own bones. I never forgot what you sacrificed for me. Thank you for giving me dragons and spellbooks. My father just laughs and goes back to his work. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Durham's first poet laureate, Mr. DJ Rogers. We now turn our attention to item thirteen, which is the contract with Legal Aid of North Carolina to administer emergency rental assistance for Durham Housing Authority residents. And as you know, we were in the middle of a motion when we discovered that we have some public speakers. So we suspended that action, the rules have also been suspended. And we're gonna hear from our public speakers, um, our citizens this afternoon for public comment on this item before we move forth. Uh, we have four names, two by way of the um internet, Zoom, and two here in person. First, we have Ms. Jenny Loom, L-O-O-M-E, Mr. Sean Brady. Uh, we also have here with us, uh, Ms. Regina Mays and Reverend Mindy Douglas. We'll turn first to our virtual participants, virtual citizens. And you all will have three minutes apiece. Ms. Loom, if you're available.
Good afternoon, members of the City Council, Madam Mayor and Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. My name is Jenny Loom and I am a member of the Durham CAN Affordable Housing Team, speaking in support of the plan to designate rental relief funding specifically for Durham Housing Authority residents. In January 2021, CAN launched a campaign to get DHA to amend its eviction policy to prevent unnecessary eviction filings. Listening sessions with residents, researching the policies of other public housing authorities, and eviction court watching informed our concern about evictions of DHA tenants. We asked DHA to, one, wait thirty days between late rent and eviction filing; two, review ledgers prior to filing an eviction notice; and three, provide proper administration of the federally required grievance procedure. This campaign culminated in an itemized proposal, which we presented to the DHA. This campaign culminated in an itemized proposal, which we presented to the DHA board and staff in July 2021. Today, we have emailed this proposal to council for your review. We may propose again in 2022 that these changes be adopted as permanent policy changes in the 2023 DHA annual plan. Additionally, as emergency rental relief funds rolled out, Can pushed DHA to delay filing evictions and not to use eviction as a tool to move residents higher on the priority list for DRRP funds. To their credit, DHA has made many changes to prevent unnecessary evictions. They implemented our proposed changes as procedure rather than as policy. They hired a team of housing stability specialists to help tenants enter into repayment agreements, and they did not use eviction filings as a tool to raise DHA tenants' priority level for rental relief funds. Despite all this work, extremely low-income residents remain stuck with burdensome repayment agreements for a long time due to being denied rental relief funds. Durham Can therefore strongly supports the proposal to distribute rental relief funds to DHA residents, relieving both the residents and DHA. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Ms. Loom, for being here this afternoon. I did miss, misspoke. Mr. Sean Brady is actually for item 15 virtually. We do have two people here, two of our citizens here in public in chambers with us. The first will be Ms. Regina Mays. The second will be Reverend Mindy Douglas. If you will come in that order, you have three minutes apiece. And I would also note to see if we have anybody else that I may have missed. If so, please raise your hand virtually. We'll let our clerk know if you're here in person. Ms. Mays?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, and all other city council members. My name is Regina Mays, and I will not say my address at this moment. I will say that I'm an affordable housing resident. And today, I want to speak about the revolving door of homelessness. Though there's a lot of conversation going on about the revolving door of the justice-involved residents, no one really wants to speak about the revolving door of homelessness. So if that being said, I have my six-month-old grandbaby with me this morning or this afternoon. I have that because her father is out working, so he no longer is part of the shelter program, not because he has to be, but because he chose to be, because he wants to be a young man, striving father that is taking care of a child that he brought into this world. He had to spend nights on a church floor when it was labeled as cold nights, just so he can get some assistance or be on the list for assistance that have not even came yet. I say all that to say, if this is not approved, you will put more residents in that circumstance. Right now, there is up to a six-week waiting list for shelter services for those who no longer have a residence. So I stand here on behalf of other affordable residents that I stay in community with. I babysitted a young child last weekend so her mother can work a second job to maintain the rental arrangement, to pay back back rent. But also with that increase of income, her rent also increases. So you're working to get out of hole, but you may not come out of it if these funds are not allocated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Mays, and for your comments. Reverend Mindy Douglas?
Good afternoon, Mayor O'Neill, Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Mindy Douglas and I am the senior pastor at First Presbyterian Church, just around the corner here. We are a church that is downtown by history and by choice, and we are committed to working for social justice in our community and beyond. Today, I come to speak on behalf of our walk-in ministry program. Our walk-in ministry provides financial assistance and spiritual support for those in crisis. And during the pandemic, our walk-in ministry supported over 200 DHA residents with rental assistance in order to keep them in their homes and prevent future eviction. In 2019, over 857 residents in DHA housing had eviction filings. And we have deep concerns about post-pandemic filings. And so we strongly support the city's proposal to pay $600,000 to DHA for the 270 residents who have applied for the E-RAP funds, because we believe this will help prevent future evictions and keep people in their homes. We also remain concerned about possible eviction filings for 200 residents who were behind in their rent before the pandemic, and the newly proposed funds do not cover their past debt. And so we would also encourage you to consider the recommendation of the city's Racial Equity Task Force for supplemental income and legal representation for residents in very low-income in public housing. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here and for your comments today, Reverend. I believe we are now ready to consider three separate motions on this item, and I'm going to read the first again in the record and we'll just start from scratch since the rules have already been suspended. So I would like to entertain a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a contract in amount of $713,618 with Legal Aid of North Carolina to provide emergency rental assistance for Durham Housing Authority residents funded with $463,618 in city funds and $250,000 in grant funds from Duke University.
Move is read.
Second.
Been moved by Mayor Pro Tem and seconded by Councilwoman Freeman. All those in favor, if you would sign by raising your left hand.
Question. Just before we vote on this, Mayor, if I could just briefly, I am in total support. But we are having a conversation on emergency rental assistance and allocating funds. And I feel as though not only is there a revolving door to homelessness, it's going to be a revolving door to this conversation. So are we, I mean, I'm going to, I'm going to support this, but are we doing anything that real, that sort of get to the root of keeping from having this conversation? And I don't know if that's an administrative question. I don't know if that's, we may not be able to answer that today or what, but.
Point of order, we're in the middle of a vote. If we could reserve responding to it until we finish the vote, since we're literally in the middle of a vote, and then have the manager, we literally are voting now. If we can have the manager respond, it's point of order. It may just.
So we'd be.
Out of order.
No, no, you're not out of order.
I'm just saying, if we finish the vote and then I think the manager is going to respond to your question, but we're literally in the middle of a vote.
Okay.
You are already raising hands.
I believe we did have a unanimous vote. All right. You didn't vote.
No, I didn't know when to state my comments, so I just.
Okay. All right, so let's just entertain that motion again and we'll carry the motion through and then we'll come back.
So moved. Second.
Been moved by Mayor Pro Tem and seconded by, who's seconded? Councilwoman Williams. All those in favor, would you sign by raising your left hand? All those opposed have the same right, seeing none that vote passes unanimously. I'll now go to the city manager to answer that question.
Thank you, Mayor O'Neill. In response to your question, Councilmember Williams, what I would say is the majority of the funding that you have seen going for rental assistance has been really funds that are passed through the federal government in response to the COVID pandemic. So I am very hopeful that that, you know, major negative impact on families, you know, will not be repeated to the degree that it has been, has been present in our lives over the past couple of years. Without going into a great deal of detail, we do have neighborhood stabilization services that assist, you know, assist families with budgeting and other kinds of, you know, other kinds of supports to help prioritize spending. And, you know, that happens at the housing authority. They have programs of that nature. So I may not be specific enough, but I did want to point out that it is relate, you know, the majority of what you have seen since you've been on the council has been a result of helping people to recover from job loss, primarily in service sectors that were closed. Many, many of our residents worked in those sectors and that's how they paid their rent. So hopefully, the rental assistance that has been provided, you know, is a one-time kind of, you know, support that helps, you know, recover credit, get out of payment plans, and have them be able to go forward with a cleaner slate. So hopefully that is.
Yeah, thank you so much. And Reverend Mindy, thank you for your leadership and all other congregations. We have over 400 churches in the city and over 14,000 nonprofits, and we have thousands of businesses. If you are a business, please let us know who you're hiring. We want to make this conversation wholesome so that we can support holistically our residents that are in most need. Let's close this door. Thank you.
We now turn to our second motion that I'd like to entertain, to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute all administrative requirements and contractual documents necessary for implementation of the Durham Rent Relief Program to include Duke University's program agreement and related documents.
Move is read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem and seconded by Councilwoman Caballero. All those in favor, would you raise your left hand? All those opposed have the same right, seeing none that motion passes unanimously. We now turn to third part for our consideration, like to entertain a motion to adopt the City of Durham Duke University grant project ordinance in amount of $250,000.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem and seconded by Councilwoman Williams. All those in favor, would you please raise your right hand? All those opposed have the same right.
Madam Mayor, it was actually Councilmember Freeman, I believe, who made the motion. Just want the record to reflect that, Reverend me.
Made the motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
I think that you voted in favor. It was still a hand raised.
There was.
Because it is a unanimous vote.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. We're moving right along. That was unanimous vote. Thank you all.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I had a question about that item. I'm fine with the passing and it's something that maybe Community Development can send an email about, but I keep hearing this number about 4,000 folks not being served, and that's not what the memo is indicating. And so I would just like some follow-up from Community Development about the numbers who have applied and why we keep hearing about 4,000 folks being left out, that we're getting emails about it, folks have mentioned it at the public hearing, and it doesn't seem like that's accurate, and I just want to hear about it so that we can communicate that accurately to the community.
Thank you. You raised an excellent point, Councilwoman Caballero. Did you want to address that?
I will ask our staff to provide an update. As, as we speak, applications are being processed, and with this funding approval, additional applications will be processed and we'll provide an update as to, you know, if there are remaining residents who did not get served.
Councilwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just adding in addition to Councilmember Caballero and Councilmember Williams' comment is to just be really clear that these payments are us paying property owners. And so there is, there definitely has to be something that addresses, and it's not always income from a job, but we do need to have the conversation of how we're, we're going to actually prevent homelessness in a way that is whole, holistic and does encompass where we are today.
Thank you so much for that. Any additional inquiries as to this matter? All right, we will now turn our attention to our next pulled item, which is item number 15, Fairhaven Walk Commonwealth Development Corporation of American Development Loan Commitment. I believe that we have Ms. Leah Bergman and Mr. Fred Stoppel-Camp who are here to speak to both items 15 and 19. You will be speaking separately on both. We will start with item 15. I believe that Mr. Sean Brady is also on as a resource person today. Each of you will have three minutes apiece. Ms. Bergman, Mr. Stoppel-Camp.
Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of the city council, thank you very much for your time and the opportunity to be here today. As you may remember, I appeared here two months ago to specifically address the process of funding for affordable housing projects, two of which you have already been approved by you, and the remaining two appear on your agenda today for approval, Fairhaven and Sandy Ridge Station. On Tuesday, I sent each of you a letter outlining my questions and concerns about the entirety of this process, including the selection, evaluation, and protest processes surrounding these four affordable housing projects. While the city attorney has responded to some of my questions as of 8:30 a.m. this morning, many remain. Moreover, the process was flawed and unfair and has had the effect of not just hurting me and my team, but most importantly, the city of Durham and many of the people that you've heard from today. This decision would kill an excellent project that Durham needs, one that city stats has noted is a good one. It also kills the project that brings forth the most local experience to bear. Me and my team and Fred, who's with me today, we house the cities most vulnerable and are called upon frequently. Please vote no or remove from today's agenda in any, in either case, to send back to the drawing board to do this right. Durham deserves better. Since my last appearance before this council, I protested the awards of those projects through the city's formal protest procedure. My protest was received and reviewed, but ultimately denied, without providing the information supporting the denial nor an opportunity for a hearing related to the protest. I also promptly submitted a separate public records request to the city and received a variety of documents associated with the RFP process, procedure, scoring, and submissions for the affordable housing projects. After the protest denial and receipt of the information from the public's records request, I then met with the Office of Community Development and the procurement agent who oversees the protest process. From that, I will highlight the most notable issues that have come to light, which should be a concern to this body and all of which were outlined in my letter sent earlier this week. First, the protest process and denial with mismatch from the timing of information. The protest quote letter of decision made no mention of how the internal protest evaluation process was conducted, what was reviewed, or how the scoring for the RFP process was determined to be valid, consistent, or unbiased. In fact, we were forced to learn this information through a public records request, which wasn't fulfilled until after the protest process hearing deadline had passed. My question to this committee is how could an outcome of protest be determined and a hearing denied if neither we nor the protest reviewers were given timely access to relevant and full information to determine the matters related to the protest? Second, the fact that there have been only two past protests for RFPs and that there were three protests alone submitted for this project would warrant a closer look by this body by sheer numbers alone. May I continue for?
You still have another three minutes with item 19.
Third, both Sandy Ridge applications were not compliant when submitted by the RFP's due date. Community Development deemed it to be in the city's best entrance to allow Sandy Ridge to cure the deficiencies, but this opportunity was not to be given to any others. And finally, it appears that some criteria was not scored based on the information actually in the applications. According to city staff, all the developers should have received full marks for just submitting their equity and inclusion, which they refer to as the E-BOP application, to show each developer's commitment to diversity. However, Sandy Ridge was allowed extra time to submit the E-BOP past the RFP due date, and another, JFK Towers, was scored a seven out of 10. If all should have received a full score per submission, why the discrepancies? The city attorney addressed this issue in a communication received at 8:30 a.m. this morning. We have not had time to fully review it. Again, my ask today is simple. Please remove the authorization request for the Fairhaven Walk and Sandy Ridge Station projects from this agenda or vote no to both requests. Thank you all for your time today, and I'm here for any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bergman. Mr. Stoppel-Camp, you'll have a total of six minutes for your items 15 and actually is item 17, 15 and 17, which is the Sandy Ridge Station Bradley House and Development. Bradley Housing Development. A little see. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, City Council. Thank you for taking my time, taking time to hear me. My name is Fred Stoppelcamp. I'm the, currently, I'm the operation director for Bergman Rental. I'm also a resident of Durham, North Carolina, at 3401 Duke Homestead Road, 27704. We've had a couple people come in here dealing with challenges with homelessness, challenges with transportation. And one of the things that I can provide to City Council and to the city in general is the experience that I've had working with the homeless and working with people trying to find jobs. In 2008, I was part of a nonprofit called Durham Economic Resource Center. I don't know if you remember it or have heard of it, but what we did was work with folks who had challenges towards employment to find them employment. I worked there for five years. Most of the residents came from our local housing shelters. Then I took a job in 2014 to work for Urban Ministries, where I was their workforce development manager. There, between those two times of Dirk and UMD, I was appointed to the Homeless Service Advisory Committee, and I stayed in that appointment for nine years. During that appointment, I also chaired the Homeless Service Advisory Committee, which I'm sure you're all aware of, that advises City Council and Durham Commissions on homelessness and homeless challenges. In 2018, I was approached by Ms. Bergman to work for her as her operation director. Main reason was my background in construction, but she was attracted to my experience working with City Council, working with other providers with the problem of homelessness. What I knew about Bergman Rental at the time was only one thing, that she was, that they were accepting vouchers in that with my clients, my most hardly, hardest-to-provide clients, to provide homelessness, or to provide housing for, Bergman Rental was the only one that would listen. Bergman Rental was the only one that was, while I was a caseworker, taking my clients out of homelessness, out of Urban Ministries, into housing. Fast forward four years to today, I work with Leah Bergman. And I see we are the number-one provider of vouchers in Durham, right around 100. I use my caseworking skills all the time for a lot of our clients, which is, which is fine. But most important is, is that we, Bergman Rental, Leah Bergman in specific, is putting her money where her mouth is. She actually helps our city with our homeless problem, and that is by housing them, by overseeing the application process, by everything, all the challenges that they have, all the skips, all the fumbles that they have in their application. I would overlook that. Bergman Rental is in the business of affordable housing. They have been in the business of affordable housing way before Leah took over. Now Bergman Rental wants to build affordable housing. The current provider, the current applique, Sandy Ridge, has done nothing for Durham, has not built anything for Durham, has not housed one single person, let alone one homeless person for Durham. So I'm here as a resident, as an employee, and also as one as a case manager who has to look at, who looked at homeless people in the face every day and had to find the challenge of finding them a housing provider. That is the reason I work for Leah Bergman, and that's the reason I'm speaking to you today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your time today. I will now open it up for end of discussion, my colleagues.
Is there, is there anyone that can respond to it?
So, good afternoon again, Mayor O'Neill and Council. These items that have been pulled by Ms. Bergman and her, her team have been placed on the agenda today as items that were ranked in the RFP process that brought forward four total proposals from, I believe it was eight proposers that were received. I would really like to say that the, the need for affordable housing in this community is great. The funding that we have available to apply, to supplement, to make the projects affordable is, is not as much as the need. And therefore, all of the proposals that would be great for this community cannot always be funded at the same time. So because of that, there's a process that takes place to rank and prioritize the projects to fill up the bucket of funding for that cycle. We did one in 2021. It was about $15 million. And I believe the one in 2022 that is before us now was approximately $15 million as well. So a total investment of about $30 million, which would likely get us about 10 or 11, I believe, 11 different projects of affordable housing. The reason that we, that these items have been pulled today relate to the process for ranking the proposals. And that process did receive appeals. You will recall that when we brought two items, the first two items, those official appeals to the process had come in. We withdrew those items from the agenda so that the staff could evaluate the appeals and determine whether or not the process was sound. That took place, and we brought those items back, and you approved them, as Ms. Bergman has said. So it's not a new process. It is, it is, it is the same process that generated the other two proposers. And the ranking has not changed. We have today with us our staff who work, who worked on those appeals, including staff from the city attorney's office, the finance department that can respond to questions about the process even today, if you have them, as well as the programmatic staff, who would be, Community Development staff are here as well. So we would be, we would be happy to respond to any questions that the mayor or the council would have about either those, you know, the, the appeal process, or the, or the RFP process, or the impact of making a change to what you have before you today.
Councilwoman Freeman?
Thank you. I have a question for Ms. Bergman. And you were, you were, I know you were trying to get through, and you were mentioning that in your protest, the notable issues was process management with no valid consistent, no valid or consistent or bias, something.
I apologize.
I was trying to catch what you were saying was the issue in the, in the actual process itself.
Yes, so I'm going to try it. And so basically, you know, we've had a couple meetings, and during the protest process, we had the gentleman on the line for the follow-up with regards to it. And I don't want to put words into somebody's mouth, but the way I came across after that was that my takeaway was, and this is me paraphrasing, if he'd known then, when he reviewed the protest, what he knows now, he would have given us the hearing for the protest. But at the time that he had determined if my protest was viable or not, he had none of the information, nor did we when we had to file our protest. It was only through the requests for public records were we able to ascertain all this information to the inconsistencies of the scoring and of the entire process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think just for staff, and specifically the inconsistency in the one area that was mentioned around allowing, I guess, someone in the process to resubmit their EPOP. Is that the norm? Is that something that was specific to this project?
So, so I would like to ask the staff that would, would do the, would bring those, bring the information forward regarding the appeal process to respond to those, to those questions.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, Distinguished Council. My name is Frederick Nielsen. I am the purchasing manager for the City of Durham, and I work in the finance division. Happy to answer any specific questions that you may have related to our overview.
Thank you. My specific question was just in, in trying to understand, the EPOP, I guess, was requested after the close of the RFP from the one participant. Is that specific to, like, is there a specific policy around making sure that you double-check or something? Or?
I'm sorry.
Or is it just, you know, I'm trying to understand how, after it closed, someone was allowed to bring more information in before scoring?
Sure, sure. So just for context, I'd like to let you know what we looked at specifically. Getting a secondary look at something or a protest review requires the purchasing team to look at the subject RFP or whatever solicitation vehicle we may be using at the time or instrument. And we ensure that it's in compliance with all of our state laws, city policy, and guidelines. And then the next step is to look at the RFP itself, determine whether or not if the scoring apparatus or evaluation criteria in the subject RFP was accurate as it relates to what came in. And finally, the evaluation committee's scoring is looked at to see if it's valid, unbiased, and has no obvious, you know, malfeasance or anything to that extent. I think what, and I don't want to put words in Ms. Bergman's mouth, but I think what she's referring to was a meeting that happened after we filed our report. And that meeting, City Attorney's Office was present, and the question was posed, would it have made a difference if, if the EPOP document was not allowed to be submitted or cured? And it was clear that I said it would not have made a difference to us at the, you know, during the evaluation time. What I said was, I didn't know about it, and that's the extent of what I said. I did not say I would have changed my mind or we would have looked at this differently. The reason why is because the, the particular process that we were using did not require all, and this is, and I'm going to defer to the city attorney that may be online, just to be sure, but it did not require all of the, the administrative documents to be in at the time of submission. And I checked that with them before. I'm responding now, just to be sure. So that's the extent of what we're talking about here now.
Okay, I'm just trying to make sure I follow. So what you're saying is after the RFP, so when the RFP goes out and it comes back in, at the close, it is not required that all documents are submitted?
So all documents should be submitted, but there are times when there are administrative items that are allowed to be received after.
Okay.
Okay, that's.
If you, and it may not be something that you can do today. If you could list out what administrative items suits?
Sure, I, I, without nitpicking, again, I wanted to refer to the city attorneys that may be on the phone with us because they were specifically involved in this. But there is no one document that is not allowed to come in on time. In other words, if, if there is an administrative document that's not required for evaluation at the time to do scoring, that is, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit nervous.
You're fine, you're fine.
Because I don't speak often in front of folks. But there was no obvious malfeasance. There was no collusion or anything. We look for the obvious stuff to ensure that pricing was received on time as it was asked for. The evaluation process was done in accordance with the criteria published, those sorts of things. And there's no forensic look at it at that point. It's just an overview of how we received this information.
And just one additional question?
Yes, please.
Is it, what's it considered if, in the RFP process, once it closed, there is a staff person making a request of the RFP provider to add additional items? So it's one thing if, if someone submits, you know, like they forgot. It's another thing if someone submits because they were requested. And how do you differentiate, sorry, how do you differentiate whether there's a bias given or not in that situation?
So in, in my understanding, and talking this through earlier with my staff, in, in my understanding of how that would work is if it has no substantive change to the overall submission, then it, it, you know, there was no particular substantive change that would have changed the outcome of this document. We checked that with the city attorneys. You can verify with them, they're on this call now.
So there's no points given for EPOP at all?
No, it was a requirement that has to happen, and that happens at times. We ask for clarification. Someone may garble an address on a document. Those are opportunities to cure. That decision was not made by our team. That was made by the evaluation folks. When we looked at it, we looked at the overall submission, and there was nothing that was obvious. There was no, you know, nefarious kind of activity. So I gave the go-ahead that this was done, and it was done in accordance with the way the City of Durham does business. Is that right?
Good afternoon, Karen Lotto, Community Development. I wanted to step in and clarify one point. There were points in the RFP for MWBE contracting, and those points were based upon the response that the applicants gave to the question about, about how would you achieve the targets that have been set for this project of 11% minority contracting and 7% women-owned business contracting? And so we were essentially asking them to give us a plan in their question. The MWB forms are a threshold requirement. When we get them, we send them actually to finance to evaluate, to say to the NI team in finance to say, do these meet the, do these meet the requirements of the city? That's not something Community Development evaluates. We were missing forms from one vendor. At that point, we were given the option of, you know, of disqualifying the vendor or reaching out to the vendor and requesting the forms. We had a conversation with management to ask how we should handle. And the decision was made to reach out. I would note, this was the only missing information that we had in any application, so it wasn't a question that we didn't reach out and request missing information from other people. We just didn't have any other missing information. Everyone else had turned in these forms, and we didn't cure any, well, we didn't have any other missing information for any of the other applications.
So just to follow up, you're, what you're saying is that, I'm just making sure I'm following. Please don't. I'm just making sure I'm following, please don't let me put words in your mouth, that you were curing the process and making sure that the documents were turned in, because everyone else turned in their documents?
Correct.
Okay. And that, in this situation, seems to have come across as giving some undue.
Correct.
You know, advantage to an organization for, for this process. And I can see why, I grant you that. But I do think that it's, it's clear, like, I want to make sure we're clear, like, the process was not tainted. The process was the process, and the review happened in a way that was consistent with the way that we normally would go through and ask the questions.
Right.
And so I can, I can follow that. What I, what I am concerned about is that if you're asking an organization that is not a minority, women-owned business, to cure, to cure that in, within the process, doesn't that give them an advantage?
No, because they're not actually changing, they're only giving us the forms
Giving you more information.
That tell us what is their composition as an organization.
Okay.
How we achieve our MWBE targeting in, or MWBE goals in our work is not, is through the actual contract where we say, you know, 18%, 7/11 of the value of your total development project must be awarded to MWBE firms.
Okay.
And, and that's what we monitor. That's what goes into the contract, and that's what we monitor for compliance. The MWB forms are a city requirement that, that we include because we're supposed to, and, and we, and we ask ENI to review them because it's not appropriate for us to say, are these appropriately completed or not? That's why we turn to ENI to review.
I got you, and I'm trying to figure out how to help in the future because what I'm hearing you say is that if we had an organization that was minority or woman-owned, they wouldn't necessarily be 11%, they'd be 100% or 50%. And that would not be, that would not give you a, any type of score, like additional scoring, like, there's no benefit to being a black woman in a business, is what you're saying.
So in a development project, you wouldn't, even if you were a minority-owned business, it wouldn't be 100% because you are, you are the developer. You are going to go out and hire a general contractor. That general contractor is going to go out and hire subcontractors. Those subcontractors are probably going to go out and hire subcontractors. Unless everybody in that waterfall is a minority and women-owned firm, the project is not 100%. So it could be a situation where only the developer is an MWBE and no one else down, and in which case, you probably wouldn't meet our targets just because the developer's not retaining 18%.
I got you.
Of the contract.
And on the flip side of that, if you are a woman-owned developer and your subs are all women-owned or people of color.
And your percentages are going to be higher.
Okay. And if the percentages are higher, how does that score?
So at the time that we are soliciting projects, typically, our developers don't even have their general contractors on board.
Got you.
So we don't know. That's why we set targets, and we say, they don't come in with their total team. That's not something that would be viable, just given the fact that there's no time delays. They don't have all their financing assembled usually when they're coming to us. So we are basically stating upfront that we are going to require that you achieve certain targets. The way that we can essentially incent good behavior on this goal is not really on the deal, that deal, it's on the next deal. Because then we can turn and say, okay, hey, you told us you were going to do, you know, 30%, but in fact, you didn't even hit our 18% goal, and that's something that in future RFPs, we can factor into our evaluation criteria. Now that we have actually begun, you know, tracking this in a more intentional way.
I appreciate that, thank you. I think, I was just going to say that, that I, what I'm concerned, or, I don't want to give the appearance that our staff did anything wrong because I don't feel like they did. But I do hear you in what you're saying, in that the way that our system is currently set up, it's not going to allow, it wouldn't allow me to win as a business owner, and I wouldn't want it to be set up in a way that didn't allow you to win. And I am, I am, what I'm saying to you is that I think in the next process, it would be great to have more feedback upfront before this RFP is written because what I'm noticing right now, at this point, and not before, is that the, the old way of doing things have given us the same results continuously. And if we don't find a new way to do it, we're going to continue to get this result, where you're number five as opposed to number four or three.
May I, Councilwoman Truman? We submitted for the first RFP process, were denied. I've had open communication throughout with Karen's team, told them every change that we've done on development, asked for their input. We were not given any feedback from the staff, gone through that.
And I hear where you're, I hear where you're going with this. If you would allow us the opportunity to go through this together, I would appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Just this time.
Yeah. May I say one other thing? Because I was limited on time, but you all found this in your emails today. There were other issues that I found flawed and concerning in the process. One is that our team, who has over 100 Housing Choice voucher participants here in Durham and houses Durham, my other development partner, United Property Management, who has done four tax credit projects in Durham already, we were given zero points for housing and working in Durham in the last five years. If that does not cause this council concern, and nobody thought to come back to us to ask for any clarification, and it was not omitted in the RFP, it was somewhere else where they didn't specifically answer the question, or they didn't specifically, excuse me, ask the question, okay? But nobody gave us any credit for that. Second of all, when reviewing the Zoom call, one of the reviewers stated that he did not review the Sandy Ridge application because he thought it was ineligible. His quote, and you can see it on the Zoom call, is, "Go with the flow and score it on the fly." If this committee feels confident voting for projects based on that, go for it. But as a citizen and a person that houses a ton of people in Durham and thoroughly enjoys my work, huge red flags, huge.
And I hear you. I appreciate you bringing those red flags up.
And you all can watch the Zoom recording as I did.
I do think that, that we, we do have a process in place. We all agreed on the process beforehand. And now that we're seeing where the areas of improvement can be, that we can improve it. Thank you.
And I would also like to say, the Community Development calls us every day to house people, and we oblige. And yet they don't want us, help us create new units? That is quite alarming.
I wouldn't go that far. I would say that we will work on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask Attorney Rayburg, she has attorneys that are on the line, and she's asked to have her attorneys come in.
Well, at this point, Madam Mayor, I feel like the staff has provided pretty comprehensive information about the issue, and I thank them for clarifying a number of things. I do have Assistant City Attorney Carlos Hernandez on the virtual platform, and also Deputy City Attorney Fred Lamar is on the virtual platform. If they have additional items that they would like to clarify, I would invite them to do that at this time.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and Councilmembers. Yes, just, first, we wanted to thank Ms. Bergman's organization for all she does for the, the city. They do attribute to a great need. In terms of the RFP, this was before my time, but the RFP did have a section where the city did have discretion. It's, it's a discretionary process. This isn't like other procurements where we have to go with the lowest responsive bidder. From what I understand, Community Development takes several factors in, into consideration before making this determination. In Section 60 of the RFP, it does state that the city may waive any non-material defects and extend deadlines and so forth. And so when reviewing the process that Mr. Nielsen was discussing, the entire purpose of the protest petition bid, I'm sorry, protest petition process, is to, is for the benefit of the city to make sure that there's no issues of malfeasance or bias or anything illegal. And so he did that, and I understand that there was an issue with him not knowing of the extension of time. However, as I said, that's, that's not a material defect. This was an administrative form. And so we reviewed the entire process, and I believe there are other factors that were more prevalent with it, even if, I'm sorry, Southern Repair were to tie with Sandy Ridge. I believe the department had mentioned the tiebreaker, which is also in the RFP, is price per unit. And in that situation, Southern Repair was the second most expensive price per unit. So there were several factors that came in there. There may have been mistakes, but legally speaking, we felt that nothing was materially deficient with the process or illegal or biased or discriminatory.
Councilwoman Johnson, I'm Freeman, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think, I appreciate Mr. Hernandez sharing that insight in the situation in case there were a tie. If there were a situation where there were a tie and the price per unit were the factor, it would become concerning if the number of units, if, if in the process, one of the recipient, or one of the RFP, and one of the RFPs were advised to reduce their units, if you understand what I'm saying? If, if there's advice in the process that tells you to lower the number of units, and then if you're a tie, the number of units or price per unit becomes a factor, some of this starts to get wonky, and I have a lot of questions. I have a lot of questions.
I have a lot of questions. I am still sort of struggling with the process, mainly because I, I don't have enough familiarity with it, and maybe that's probably a beginning point for me. But I did key in on, you said that in terms of, there is some discretion that you have in that process. One of my questions would be, where is, where is that area? And how did you, or did you use your discretion? Because that, that's where it gets, where it can get kind of wonky is, Councilwoman Freeman, when you have discretion, how do you, how do you use that discretion, or was it used? So if you could kind of go back through that for me, explain that a little bit further.
I think that, that, sorry. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, you know, I believe that the City Attorney talked about where that enabling discretion, discretionary authority, if you will, was provided, which was in the request for proposal. And I, I don't want to speak about the specifics. I would rather the folks that actually reviewed it speak about the specifics. But I, I believe that discretion was, at least to my understanding, allowing some additional time to submit an information report, which that, I see Ms. Lotto coming forward.
Madam Manager, I was just coming forward to confirm that that was correct. You know, to the extent possible, we included a scoring rubric as part of our RFP that showed what we were going to score and how many points were allocated to each factor. And we do our best to score in as transparent a way as possible, knowing that it is, there is necessarily interpretation involved. When you are reading questions, you are saying, okay, there are 10 points associated with site quality. I'm making, I'm making that up, but to say, how am I going to decide as a reviewer, you know, where I place this, this project? So there is some element of that the reviewer has to make decisions based on the factors that have been articulated as important. That being said, the only place where we sort of exercised and said we're going to go and request more information was this one request for additional information. I will say, there was one other place in the Southern Repair Service application. On one table, we had a requirement that there be 20% of the units set aside at 30% of area median income as part of the project. There was a table where the applicant was supposed to indicate the AMI breakdown of their application. Southern Repair's table had 0%, at 30% of area median income, but their pro forma, which is their, kind of their financial projection for the project, had 20%. So we chose to go with the numbers in the pro forma and say that they met that guideline, rather than to go with the numbers in the table.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. This RFP process has been the same RFP process that has brought, I don't even know how many proposals I've voted on since I've been on council and councils before us. And I'm not going to for one minute pretend that it's perfect. But, but I think this is the state of play. First off, let me say, full disclosure, I'm a huge fan of Leah Bergman. Everything she said about her service to the city is true, everything. She has answered our call when we've needed to house people. And it is never, ever, ever an easy thing to do in this job, to vote against your friends. And if you, if you're in this job long enough, you're going to have to do that from time to time. And I haven't, you know, and I've had to see these people out in the streets, and there have been friends who have had things before the council, and I had to vote a different way. The question for me is, in this RFP process, in this particular case, do I believe that our staff in some way acted nefariously, with malfeasance, or targeted this particular development proposal? I don't believe that. I don't believe it, I do not believe that this, this person, this proposal was singled out. I am fully aware that RFPs do not always go the way developers want them to. They have not gone the way I've wanted them to because I've been pulling for folk who have had matters before the council, didn't go that way, and there have been people who have had matters before the council who I'm huge fans of, but did not vote the way they wanted me to vote. That's just the state of play, and that comes with the job. This RFP process, while again, not perfect, has, has served us well. I think we ought to be, take great caution as a council before we get too far down beneath our perch in the organizational chart and start kind of going line by line what's in RFPs. Because if, if we set that precedent here, then if you think we've had some long nights before, you need to be prepared to do that moving forward. And then what's the purpose of having a professional staff in those cases? If I believe for one minute, for one second, that the staff was in any way acting maliciously, in any way engaged in any malfeasance, I would do it for any resident, more so one that I'm a fan of. If I thought that they were getting the shaft, I would certainly sound off. With that said, I'm prepared to keep these matters on consent and vote and move forward. I think the explanation provided by staff and by the City Attorney's Office is more than suffice and passes the threshold of acceptability for me. And I think we ought to be cautioned to, to go too far down into the weeds of reviewing RFPs. They're pretty long. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just to follow up with my comments, I do agree that there is a level where we have to realize what our roles are. But I also would think that there is a basic understanding that we should have of processes to help us to answer when issues are raised by citizens who come before us with their issues so we at least know and can help to answer those questions that they may have. That's my issue, is that I'm not familiar enough with the process to be able to kind of put it in a context. So for those of you who have been sitting here long enough in this space, I know you know that area, but I don't know that I know that area well enough to be able to kind of put all that's been said before us in a context. And I'd like to feel comfortable about that in any vote that I am. So at, at this point, I am not comfortable until I know some of what, what goes on in this arena to move forward. Councilman Williams.
Yeah, I, I want to, I want to commend the staff because I know this is complicated. It's complicated work. It's complicated work. I just whispered over here that I am, if I'm being just totally honest, this is going way over my head. So I, I, I can't really contribute a lot to the conversation, so I know a little more about this process. So I'm not going to vote against it, I'm not going to vote for it. So if I have to abstain, abstaining, I'll, I'll do that. But I, I just, I, I don't know if I can do that or not. All right, I just, I don't know enough right now. And I am totally confused, and I owe that to the public, to be honest. So I just, I want to commend you all, you know, I appreciate you all taking on the hard part. I got a lot of homework to do.
Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to appreciate Ms. Bergman and your company for all the work that you do in Durham. You are often the first people who come up when our agencies are looking for affordable housing for clients, and want you to know that we all deeply appreciate all the work that you do. I'm really concerned with the direction this conversation is going, because unfortunately, we just don't have the funding to fund all of the amazing projects that came through on this RFP. If we had more money to fund Ms. Bergman's project and the other projects that scored lower on, on the staff's plan, I'm sure we would all be willing to do that. But what we're being asked to do today is to delay or deny the building of affordable housing because, because one of the, because one of the developers who didn't win the bid is unhappy with the result. And I'm sure all the developers that didn't win the bid are unhappy with the result, several of them appealed. Those appeals were fully vetted by our staff, and those appeals were denied. It was found that the RFP process was fair, that it followed the city's rules, and there were no material deficiencies. I think that it's important that we move these projects forward. We're talking about hundreds of units of affordable housing that our community needs right now. And, you know, if we had more money to fund other projects, I would love to do that. But what we have right now, this more than 300 units of affordable housing that, that our community desperately needs from these companies that have been chosen by the RFP in a process that's been vetted by the department and the city attorney, I really feel like it's important for us to move these forward. We aren't voting on it today. It's going, I think the question is whether it's going on consent or GBA. But I would encourage my colleagues not to, when, when this comes before us, to, to move these projects forward. I think that we've gotten great information from our staff today about the process, and that the process, though complicated and not fully, I, I don't, you know, I don't have the same understanding of the RFP process as the staff who administer that process. I think that's intentional. This is supposed to be an administrative process, not a political process, subject to the political concerns of folks who are elected. And I, I hope that we continue to have those processes fully handled by our staff and then come to us only for that, that vetting and, and review. I think us getting too deep into the weeds, as, as Councilmember Middleton said, risks some political involvement in ways that I don't think are, are, are good, are fair, and are gonna, are gonna benefit our, our residents and our community. So in spite of there being several good projects that we did not have the ability to fund, I would hope that we are able to move the good projects that we do have the ability to fund forward in order to make sure that, you know, what, what we can't, what we can do is being done as efficiently and as quickly as possible. These are, you know, this is one of our highest priorities as a council, and, and I would hate to, to see them delayed because of this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson. You know, you, you always give us a nugget that kind of, kind of helps us to put it in context with what we're doing. So when you said that we can move this to GBA, that gives us the amount of time that we need, at least two weeks to understand the process. That's all I want to do. Just maybe to understand and articulate in my own mind, because of course it is not our desire to slow anything down that is going to help fill the necessary gaps. But I do, do think that, you know, we have an obligation to make an, to have an understanding of what processes are and how things move along. So I am satisfied with keeping, keeping this item on or moving it to GBA and coming back to it. That's, that's where I would be today. Councilwoman, how do you have it?
Thank you. I just want to say that since there is not consent on council, it looks like we will be having this item on GBA. That's how it has moved forward. I do want to thank staff and Ms. Bergman for being here. I think that staff, you know, having put together hundreds of RFPs and scored hundreds of rubrics, I know it's a really hard process. I, I, I know that it's challenging, and I, sometimes we fail, and that's, you know, we, we improve processes, but I, I know that genuinely our bar is very high. I know there were lots of eyes on this. And so I, I don't want to be scoring rubrics. That's why I haven't done that. Thank you very much. So I appreciate, while there may be council members who need more information, I hope that we will move this forward. There are hundreds of units. We need more resources so that we can continue to build affordable housing, and if there needs to be some updates to our RFP process to make things clearer and more straightforward for applicants, I'm sure our staff, as always, will be open to looking at our process and improving it.
Councilwoman Freeman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, colleagues. I, I do agree that this item can move forward on GBA. Just acknowledging that I want to caution my colleagues in just noting that when someone who understands affordable housing brings forward this type of issue, that it's worth looking under the hood a lot more closely than in normal times. This is not just the general RFP process. There's someone who has been very involved in our homelessness services, and someone who's been very involved in our affordable housing services. And there's some, there's been a few people very involved with the RFP process, at least three, that have raised the flag, and I think it's, it's worth having additional conversation. And so I appreciate folks being here today, and I appreciate the flag being raised. I do think that our staff is doing the best that they can with the support and the authority that they have. I don't think it's at that level that the changes need to be made. I do think it's at our level. And if we don't understand the process, you can't make those changes. And I'm going to repeat again, if we don't make the changes, we're going to continue to get the same result, which is developers coming from out of state, developers coming from all over the country who have not done anything in Durham, actually reaping the benefits from the dollars we put in as taxpayers for that $95 million tax bond, which was not enough to start with. And I've stated that a number of times, but if we're going to say that we're doing this to benefit Durham and the taxpayers of Durham, then we need to be really consistent about that across the board. Thank you.
All right, and I think they're actually here looking at items 15 and 17, so I would like both of those, they spoke to both of those, to go to GBA, unless there is any objection to that. All right, thank you, Ms. Bergman, for being here today. Thank you, staff, staff for a conversation. It's all about learning and trying to do the best thing for Durham, the best that we know how, but it does require some basic understanding, and some of us are still very new in this process, and we want to make sure that we remain accountable in our own minds, that we are, we can understand and be able to sufficiently vote when requested to do so. So thank you all for that discussion. All right, that will move us to item 18, that has been pulled, which is prescriptions for repair proposal from Community Safety and Wellness Task Force. We have speakers for that this afternoon. We have Ms. Marcia Owens, Mr. Xavier Kason, and Mr. Henry Rice. I only have three persons in, in, three, three persons signed up for in-person presentations. Each of you will have three minutes apiece. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, distinguished Mayor O'Neill, Mayor Pro Tim Middleton, and council members. This is, I'd like to introduce this, this recommendation was first born in an invitation from the Duke Institute for Health Innovations to address racial inequity and gun violence in Durham. And so I would like to introduce first our partner in this recommendation, which is Dr. Henry Rice. He is the chief pediatric surgeon at Duke Hospital and has a very intimate knowledge of the problem that we're here to address, which is gun violence in Durham. Dr. Rice, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Marcia. Mayor O'Neill, Mayor Pro Tim Middleton, and council, I appreciate the chance to share just a few thoughts with you today. As Marcia mentioned, I'm Henry Rice, I'm a pediatric surgeon at Duke and a Durham native, and I also co-direct the Center for Global Surgery and Health Equity at Duke. And I am here to get into it, to tell you a story. You all probably remember a few months ago, six children were shot in one night in Durham. And I was, I was caring for the surviving children. I was almost struck about how routine these events have become in our community, and around the country, and around the world. And we simply don't do enough. And from those experiences, a growing movement has come around the country, in our community, with a number of different organizations, and now through Duke to help address some of these issues. And this grew into what's called the Prescriptions for Repair Project, which is in your, your program. This is a really unique public-private partnership. It brings together academic experts in gun violence, in clinical care, in policy, in community engagement, with yourselves, with, with the council, with the city of Durham, with other community partners to address how we tend to the needs of gun violence victims and survivors. And in my short time, let me tell you two goals we're going to get out of this. The first is, we're going to improve the healing of these people in our community. We do a good job at Duke Hospital in stopping bleeding, in sewing holes, in getting people out of the hospital. We don't do a very good job attending to their needs during their recovery out. And frankly, I'm getting sick of taking bullets out of children. I don't want to do it anymore. And the second is the value, the growing value that we can get from the experiences of gun violence survivors. To paraphrase one of my colleagues, Ed Barstel, who's a surgeon and gun violence expert in Cleveland, we have learned, and has a growing evidence, that hurt people tend to hurt other people. And healed people tend to heal other people. And that's the program we're trying to do to build healing in our community. So I thank you for your time and partnership.
Thank you so much, Ms. Owens.
Yes, I just would like to add that we feel that having intentional facilitated listening sessions, 320 hours with trained facilitators, so we're training Durham citizens in listening, in nonjudgmental, empathic listening, and, which hopefully could be, grow into a choir of listeners as time goes on. It could become a regular practice. And listening to survivors of gun violence puts, centers our response to gun violence with survivors. And by asking them, giving them at the minimum of eight hours of nonjudgmental listening to ask that critical final question, which will be our public knowledge, what needs to be done to make things as right as possible? I submit to you that we will be surprised. Somehow, I think we, we have neglected survivors. We have an entire criminal legal system that asks people who have done harm what they need. And hence, we have free cognitive behavioral interventions, we have housing money, all of which are great, all of which are really important. And I've seen what that kind of care produces. And it does produce healing and support and inclusion. But we have isolated survivors. We have a dearth of care for survivors. And I think as we become a city, we now are a city of, of hurt people, I really think that this proposal is a simple and yet a very profound start to creating a city of healed people. So thank you for your consideration. It is a recommendation. We suggested that it be, live in the community safety department because it is a non-legal intervention or pilot program. So, and any questions? I know co-chair Xavier Kason is here as well, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Councilwoman Kamau Yara.
Thank you. I don't have any questions for our wonderful co-chairs. I sit on this task force as the council liaison, and I've seen them develop this over several months, including participating or at least listening to the conversations that our task force, task force members have had. This is an incredible project. I think this is exactly why we set money aside for this task force. I know we can have conversations about how we do that for other task force, but I, I'm proud of the fact that we, we did have that foresight. And I, I will be very much supporting this. I think that it's exactly, as you stated, Marcia, it is putting us in a different arena, and I think it has a lot of opportunity, especially with our Mayor Pro Tim, with the resolution he wants us to pass in this moment after Uvalde, which is hopefully a turning point for us. This aligns with what at least my hopes and expectations are for both Durham and our country.
Open it up to any other questions from my colleagues? Williams.
Question, I first want to say thank you to, I can't remember your name, but, Dr. Rice, thank you for being on board with this. I, I think, well, actually, I mentioned to the co-chair that I'm just now taking a deep dive into the Community Safety and Wellness Task Force as a resource for our overall, our overall, you know, suite of options to preventative measures around public safety. I do want to ask, have you, not specifically you, I appreciate the, the private contribution to the public option here, but to the task force co-chairs, are we engaging with any external partners regarding, just as I mentioned earlier, you know, the clergies or the congregations or nonprofits in Durham? And the reason why I'm asking that is because I, I don't want us to get into practice of doing something to say we're doing it. I want to make sure we're doing it to make sure it's, it's enhanced and expanded, to be as effective as possible. So are, are you all engaging at that level?
Yes, the success of this project actually rests in the cooperation of all of the CBAs, all the community-based organizations that also share this concern about stopping gun violence and having a community of healing. So that would, yes, very much so. This proposal came together, though, really with the Center for Child and Family Health, the Durham County Public Health Department's Gun Safety Team. We've just talked, we've talked to so many people, Alliance, Behavioral Health. We wanted to make sure that the people who would support this, that would hopefully be one of our partners in providing services, agree. And there has been no one who hasn't said, please bring me the research. We want to know what survivors of gun violence have identified as their needs. That's what we want. Instead of telling people what we think they need, we want to hear what they have said they need. And I think really, we will be surprised by what we learn. So it is extremely community-based. It's community-based because we'll be recruiting facilitators as well as survivors, and we'll be paying everyone. This is valuable information, and it should be compensated.
Thank you. I, I think what I'm trying to get to the bottom of in addition to this is, why are these things happening? Why do we have gunshot victims? And I think one side of this is hearing their story and their perspective. The other is what I recently asked the police chief for, more qualitative data that gives us an assessment, rather, of what's happening. Are you all contributing to that type of work at all?
That's it. That's exactly what this is. This is qualitative data, and those are the researchers that will be a part of this process. And those are the researchers that will be a part of this project are trained in qualitative analysis and research. So that's exactly what we're getting. It's like, we know more than every day someone is shot in Durham. Last year, Duke Hospital treated 393 people for gunshot wounds. So we know we have a problem. But we don't have that, we have the quantity, but we don't have the quality. And we feel that there is a huge gap in knowledge, and that gap comes from the survivors themselves, including the families of those who have had a loved one taken fatally.
Thank you. And lastly, for our city manager and council member, Hyman, at the city level, are, is there any duality going on? Is this happening already at all at the city level? And is this, were you all doing any work similar to this at the, on the county level with the DSS Board?
Not to my knowledge. But I guess I just want clarity on, so once you obtain the research, right? And let me just go back, because again, someone who does research, so this is a vulnerable population. And so how are you going to go about getting, I guess, approval from, if you have to go through IRB? I don't know if you do that. But how are you going to get approval? Because this is a vulnerable population, and that's not usually a population that we can do research on without getting consent.
No. I appreciate that, Councilwoman. There are two purposes to this program, one of which is an intervention, if you will, to address healing needs that extend beyond the hospital setting. That's not a research need. That's just a glaring gap in where our health system fails in our community. But the second thing, what you allude to, is what can we learn from this? What can we learn in the city of Durham? What can we share with others? And that's where I'm bringing together actually experts in gun policy, in qualitative research, in health equity studies from across all different institutes at Duke, across people outside of Duke who are bringing to this. And what we are planning, I didn't want to take too much time, but we're planning to partner with this, a qualitative research, an intensive research that will be approved by the Duke IRB, that will require informed consent, that will attend to the needs of vulnerable populations, and that will result in dissemination of this information in a very structured way so that we can learn the lessons in our community about the underlying root causes of why we're not interrupting the causes of gun violence. I don't know what we'll find, but I think we're going to find something.
So I guess my concern is sometimes that those vulnerable populations, and even if IRB approves it, they feel like they're just a study. Okay? And so I guess my concern is making sure that you are letting the population, because there's a population at risk, know the purpose, and they're going to ask, you know, what's going to come out of this? And that's usually what happens when someone does research, right? So that is, again, a vulnerable population. I know Duke is a research one school, I think, or, right? So you probably will be able to get it passed through. But I'm just concerned about the residents or whoever you're going to use in this population at risk, what they're going to feel about, okay, you're getting this information, but then what's going to come out of it?
Yeah, I absolutely understand where you're coming from. And just in our limited time, I would say that the heart of how we're going to reduce those risks is to get full community engagement with a number of different groups in forming the research component of it, in addressing the questions, in framing the project itself. And on the backend, key to this, is we're disseminating the information back to the communities at risk. So they will get all the information they do. And without that, it's not valuable. I couldn't agree with you more.
Again, and this is my last thing, I'm going to be on my soapbox because I see too much research that just sits there and then nothing happens with it. So I just want to also say that the people who you're going to employ in this research are going to want to know that it's not just going to sit on somebody's, in somebody's library, and what is going to happen. Because it's good to get the information, because we need the informed information. Because I think I said before last week, practice informs research and research informs practice. But also, we have to also be conscious of the people we're getting the research from, and they want solutions. They just don't want it to be on somebody's library that we've done research at Duke, Central, wherever the case may be.
I hear you.
So I'm just very passionate about that.
I would say points all well-taken.
Yes, well, we have, thank you for that. That, we have a second recommendation that we just voted on last night at the task force to create an office of survivor care. So this would be, and we also have, if you look in the budget, there is also, I think, adequate money to respond to whatever we learn. We're not going to anticipate what we, what we're going to learn, but we're going to have the funds to respond to the needs that violence created, one person at a time. So this, hopefully, this information that we gather here in this pilot program, hopefully will form the foundation for an office of survivor care. And also, remember, as we build this, you know, a capacity, this Department of Community Safety, is building a capacity, a non-legal capacity to care for one another and survivors of violence. So I can't think of anything more important for our children, for our families, and for our future.
So, the population at risk, in order for you to interview them and stuff like, how are you recruiting? And are they going to be offered, again, it just blurs a little boundaries in terms of how you get people to be recruited for the study and the research and all of that?
We're keeping the, it very open. We would like to speak and listen to and learn from and get the wisdom from people who've been shot recently, or last year, three years, five years, 10 years. There's no, we're not putting any kind of restrictions on that. We will recruit from within our community. Our task force alone has said, we need 40, you want 40 gunshot victims? I can do that tonight. So we will be recruiting, we are in the community. The task force was formed of community people. You all chose and appointed, approved that the members of the task force, and I think they really do represent the community. And it will be, you know, those connections and those relationships that will do the recruiting and will...
I think my last thing is, with that, I'm just going to ask that you also solicit mental health services when you're doing this study, because people who are victims of violence, you are reoccurring trauma.
That's right. We met, by the way, one of our partners, and we are in partnership with the ACES in Resiliency Task Force. And so we have Al-Furullah, we're very, you know, we're, everyone belongs. And so we are forming a network of partnerships that will address that concern. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon, chairs. And Dr. Rice, thank you for being with us today. Appreciate you. Know you're very busy being with us here in the chamber. So I want to, I have a number of questions and perhaps some variables you can substitute for me. I don't think this is a bad idea. But I do have some questions about process and bandwidth of our new department, and placing, and timing. First, I have a question for the staff. A million dollars was set aside for this task force almost, well, over a year ago now. Do we have a rundown of how much money's been spent thus far and what has been spent on?
I do. So far, we've spent $23,000 and change, and I have the exact numbers if I can find them. And that has been spent on language translation, on language justice, and on stipends for listening sessions and town halls. So out of that million, that has been spent.
So to date, $23,000 on stipends and language access for session?
That's it. The whole thing.
Right. Yeah, a lot of money's left out of a million dollars. When, I went back and looked at some of the media around this and some of our conversations at the council when the task force was first empaneled, and one, it was billed as finding alternatives to policing. That, that's what we were looking for. And the task force had a date certain. It's not like some of our other task force that are in perpetuity has a date certain, sort of like the racial equity task force. And this is new territory for us, because we've never put that much money to a task force before, not even the racial equity task force. When the racial equity task force's work was done, a work product was produced, a document was produced with a number of recommendations. Now, this might be errant on my part, but my expectation was that there would be some type of document with a bunch of conclusions and some recommendations, not kind of a piecemeal approach project here. I think this is the first time you've come before us with a proposal for funding after over a year. And I was expecting some kind of work product from this document and then a list of recommendations. Money's not discretionary, obviously. So I guess my first question is, is there a document, a comprehensive document forthcoming from this task force with a list of recs? Or are you going to be taking a piecemeal approach?
Oh, absolutely. There will be a final report at the end of the tenure of the task force, which is in one year. We're at a one-year anniversary. But this came forth, and Xavier, please!
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that when we were brought on as co-chairs, we were asked by Mayor Shul to definitely come with a final document with recommendations that could be ongoing. But also, if we see things that could be addressed along the way, and we're one year in now, to bring those as well. So with the $23,000, I think $700,000 that we've already allocated, this proposal and the proposal for the Office of Survivor Care that will come later, that's almost $500,000 right there. Because this one's 140-some, other one's over $230,000. So just in this one and the following recommendations, that will be $500,000 at that point.
Okay.
There will be a final document with all the recommendations together. So that's why we're trying to make sure that we give you quarterly reports as we go along.
So if, would it, would it be inappropriate to wait to look to fund this proposal as part of your final document and list of recommendations?
This is a, this is a recommendation, and we totally defer to your judgment and your expertise and your commitment to Durham, to be city council people and Mayor Pro Tem. So, you know, we are just doing what we were asked to do.
So clarify a question. Are you referring to within this, the upcoming budget cycle, or the cycle that we plan for the following?
No, it wouldn't be this upcoming, we've received, this wasn't presented as part of the
Exactly.
...the public, the community safety departments asked. So this is not an administrative thrust. This is coming solely from the task force. So no, it would not be part of this budget. But if you have a document, a master document coming with recommendations, why would this recommendation not be bundled in that, in that document?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'll just go back to what I said earlier. We were given the understanding that if great things are in front of us that we can work on now, why wait? Especially when we have partners that want to go ahead and actually help us fund it as well.
Well, I'm sorry, my...
I guess, why wait? Also, as we see, one of the things that we've just, it's so clear in the engagement that we've had with community is that we have this tremendous gap, that we have not engaged survivors, we have not centered this problem on the people who are most affected, the survivors of gun violence. And so we do feel, I feel, we feel, an urgency, an extreme urgency. I've felt this urgency for 30 years. And it's, you know, why wait? And also, by understanding, by asking those who are most affected what they need to make things right, that should be the foundation of everything we do, I think. I mean, I think that should be our light, our guide for many policies. And we keep saying, people, you know, closest to the pain should, I think, be also closest to the policy.
Yeah.
This may be helpful as well. Again, there's two things that we're thinking about, a part one and part two. The part one is what's in front of you now, which is hearing from the community. That is an ongoing part of our work, and to me, sounds like something we should be doing now. The second part, which is the Office of Survivor Care, could come at the end.
With respect to the animating charge of this committee, would you characterize this as an alternative to policing?
I, I would cause, call this an alternative to indifference.
Alternative to what?
Alternative to indifference.
To indifference?
Indifference to the needs of those who have been harmed by gun violence. So, and I think, I think that, you know...
Just to be sure, so that's not an alternative to policing?
No, it's really, it's like, it's recognizing that there's more to safety and wellness than a criminal legal system.
I agree with you. No, I agree.
That's all, that's all. We were charged with looking at gaps and the well-being of Durham.
Yeah, the actual first charge that we were given doesn't even involve the word policing. It says that we should do a comprehensive review of public safety, institutional and community-based, and see if there's any gaps there. That first part of our charge doesn't even include anything about policing.
So you see this as a public safety initiative, servicing victims?
Public safety and wellness.
Yes, yes.
All right. To answer, I'm going to take your why wait as non- rhetorical and actually going to answer it. I'm inclined to wait because I don't really see the Safety and Wellness Task Force as, or should be in a position right now to affect the immediate work product of the new department. And it's a bandwidth issue. If we were to fund this now, we had a pretty robust menu of pilots presented to us by Director Smith, that I think is, you know, it comports with the animating spirit of this task force. It's something that we've all agreed upon. We're putting a lot of money into it. And I'm just concerned with what's already on his plate, having a task force add to that, particularly when it's not an administrative ask. It's not, this isn't coming in administration, this is coming from the task force. You know, not to be cute about it, but you said why wait? I mean, it's been over a year, and this is the first thing, and gun violence has been going on since this task force has been in existence. So there have been plenty of on-ramps to come and ask us for stuff in the last year. So, you know, and that's, I don't mean that in a pejorative sense, but I'm saying, you know, it's been over a year. And I think that, given what the, the public safety department, community safety department has on its plate right now, I'm not really inclined to, to put anything else on them when we haven't even gotten our initial pilots off the ground, we haven't gotten any data. I think it's a great idea. But why wait? I think we should wait because of bandwidth. I also have some questions about the, and I think Councilmember Williams touched on this, some duplicative elements. I know that in the DA, there's a victim services unit in the DA, and I know that the county deals with, with mental health issues and wellness. That's not to say that we can't weigh into that. But given the representation on our safety task force, it's only the city's checkbook is, well, Duke, Duke's got a whole bunch of money. I was wondering if, you know, the money coming from, from us, should the county be looked at as well? And since this is my first time being able to look at it, and this is the first time, and it's attached to an ask as well, I would have liked some more time to actually consider it and then talk about the money down the road. So my, my position as of today, I think, I think it's a good idea worth looking at, but I'm not prepared to task the community safety, the new safety department at this point. I think they've got enough on their plate. I want to get those pilots that we've approved already off to a start. The other thing is, with respect to the, going down the road, the Office of Victim Services, the, as task force go, the, now that we have a fully vested safety department, I don't know if the best view or use of that million dollars is to, is to establish structures that are going to weigh past a million dollars. In other words, once this task force is dissolved, or you might ask for an extension like the racial equity task force did, but once this task force is disembanded because it has an expiration date, codifying or kind of putting things into structure that are going to cost a million dollars way beyond the life, you know, as task force go, my thinking was that that million dollars would serve the work of the task force, not necessarily change the org chart or structure of the city, which usually comes from administrative ask. So that's, that's something else I was kind of wrestling with as well, you know, because that's, that's more than a million dollars. And we have a city manager, we have a staff. Do we want the task force also adding to the workflow of the, you can certainly ask to, but at this point, I think part of our job is to make a determination about the bandwidth and capacity and cost. So, you know, I'm not saying no, I'm just saying no for now. I would like to get through this budget cycle and then perhaps take a look at this down the road when we can do a deeper dive, talk about maybe getting some other folk to help write the check, since the county has representation, DPS has representation on the task force. write the check, since the county has representation, DPS has representation on the task force, but the lion's share is being asked for from the city. So, yeah, those are my thoughts. I think it's a wonderful initiative, but I would be inclined not to, and I saw the date as well, you want it done like June this month. I think that, and given your agreement, that it could very well be bundled in your final document, a list of recommendations. My recommendation to the council would be, let's take another look after we get through this budget cycle. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I do have a couple of questions that I'd like to raise as well. I think, as soon as you started, your presentation was saying that this is sort of a Duke-initiated study. So my question would be, I know that the county sits at the table, as Mayor Protim has indicated, Durham Public Schools sits at that table, and Duke as well. So what is the financial obligation for each of those? I know that we're, I think I can gain from what Mayor Protim is saying, that the county has not put any money, or have they been requested of money? And then what is Duke's financial part in this as well?
Duke has committed approximately $35,000 to this. And no, we've just, this is a recommendation to the council.
So Duke has put in 35, we're being asked to put in how much?
$112.
Okay. The other question that I would have is, what do you all see the correlation between, I do have some concerns on, with us trying to stand up a new department, and they are still in the, they're actively doing that right now. What is your take on the correlation or the relationship between what you're asking now and the Community Safety Department? What are you all recommending as that relationship? What would that relationship be?
Thank you for the question. So we have four roundtable subcommittees. This one is coming from a subcommittee that's looking into survivors of violence. And the proposal before you has nothing to do with that department. We do have other roundtables that are working hand-in-hand with the department, because this department didn't exist when this task force was formed. And so our Crisis Intervention Roundtable, we meet with them, they meet with us, and we don't, what we don't want to do is get ahead of a great department that's doing great work or add to their plate. And so that's the second part that we would like to see, that we passed last night, of liking to see an Office of Community Safety, I mean, Office of Survival Care. But separate from that, this is a part of our ongoing research. So the ask before you today is separate from any work or capacity that would be added to the Community Safety Department. This is a, this is part of our research, if that helps clarify the two. Second one that we voted on last night in ours hasn't come to you yet, because we just voted on it, and that's something for, that is something for down the road. But for today's consideration, we're talking about our research aspect.
There is no relationship at this point between the ask today and the Community Safety Department.
That's my understanding. It was your roundtable, so I want to make sure I'm right.
Right, no, no.
Yeah, that's correct.
We looked at it, and it just, it just seemed like, given what is happening in the crisis response, that it is the perfect fit, because we've got care navigators, we're serving and caring for, you know, it's not, it's a non-legal intervention. We're not asking people what law was broken, we're asking what needs do they have? What of them has been broken? And so that's, it just made sense, that we have this new department, it just feels right, and it made sense that that's it. And if you recommend someplace else, that's fine. We would just, we really would like to have this information to inform our recommendations, and hence also the urgency of it.
And I think that that information, if we can get it, and I preface it that way, because what happens in a lot of instances is that a lot of people who are involved in these situations are reluctant to talk to anybody. So, and when you have that type of reluctance, you also, there are going to have to be some cultural differences that have to be worked out, because there are, as Dr. Harmon has indicated, sometimes we've not had the best experiences as Black people in going into medical settings and feeling like we are a part of being researched and not really helped. So that raised some concerns for me. Also, the other thing, you know, when I first started running and trying to get my hand around this, one of the things that I approached is an office of, having an office of gun violence, which was still an idea. But as I've gotten into this road, what I've come to realize that there are lots of great ideas, but there are lots of moving parts, that there can be a lot of overlap. And so now that we have a Community Safety Department, which encompasses gun violence among other things, I've had to rethink that, to sort of figure out, how do we, how do we limit the, because we have limited resources, how do we make sure that we are creating structures and organizations that are, that fill in gaps, and we know we need those gaps filled? But we also have to be conscious that there is not a whole lot of money to go along. And in that same vein, where are the places that we can partner? And not just partner in name only, but people actually putting their dollars behind it. So I do find it, I know that this task force was set up with a million dollars, but if you have other community partners, their ask should be the same. You know, if you're a partner, then you're asking us for $112, then somebody else needs to come up with $112. All the partners that have a pocketbook need to put some money in there, and not just the city. Of those three big organizations that are talking, talked about the county, Duke Health System, and Durham City, we're the, our budget is a little bit smaller compared to the rest of them. And Duke is sitting over there with a billion-dollar endowment too, is what I hear. So I just think that we have to be conscious that if others want to see this type work done, which we definitely needed, I know the gaps that are in that system, but if you're going to be a partner, then partner more than just in name. Put your money at the same rate that you're asking us to put the same rate. And I charge that back to Duke, you know, split that money. $35,000 compared to $112, hmm, that's not equal, that's not equitable. And the county is like zero, nah, uh-uh. And Durham Public Schools is a big zero too? That doesn't fly well with me. I think it's a great idea, but we got to be fair about resources and who has the big bucks.
Okay. I would just like to reiterate that this money is for the task force to understand better what is happening in Durham and how do we respond to the needs of survivors? That it's not systemic, it's not about, you know, it's about individuals telling us what is needed in Durham. So it is task force-based.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks, y'all, for coming today and for this proposal. I've been in the task force meetings, kind of watching this whole process come to life, and it's exciting to have you here for the first presentation. I think we should support this, I like this proposal. I think that it's an important piece of the safety and wellness especially puzzle, something that I hadn't really ever considered, despite, you know, I have, my family has, of course, like most families, been touched by gun violence, but when we were in that situation, there, you know, there weren't resources for us. I didn't, it wouldn't even have occurred to me to go to the city in which the incident had occurred and ask for some sort of like victim support resource. So this is an interesting, an interesting entry into the space that I think is very, is very different. I would like to know, I'm a little bit confused about the nexus between this proposal and this Community Safety Department. Would the people who are hired be contractors and just the contracts be administered by the department? Or are you, okay, that's what you're proposing?
Correct.
Okay. And have, I know that, you know, Ryan and Dwayne are in all the meetings, have they, like, do they support this? Are they supportive of administering the contract and they're, they don't, they don't think that it would be an overload on their, on their plate?
That's right. They've said, also, because it is a one-year pilot, it's a very small project, actually, that there is an advisory group as well, circle of citizens, volunteer citizens, to support the work of this too. So it feels like it wouldn't be much of a burden on the new department, that it could be supported by lots of people and not have to rely on.
Thanks. I have a couple more questions, but should we go to Bo?
Great.
Good afternoon. Bo Ferguson, Deputy City Manager for Public Safety, Mayor, Mayor Protim, members of council. Just wanted to offer that, you know, I have had conversations with Ryan Smith about this. I know Ryan has been in dialogue as his department and our fuse fellow, Dwayne Campbell, have been with the Community Safety and Wellness Task Force. I want to be clear that the department has not evaluated their capacity to host. I think they have had general discussions about, you know, the potential value of this work to the community. I know they have had, I believe, conversations about the potential for multiple agencies to serve as a home for this work, but that does not constitute a formal analysis or a formal acknowledgement that they have the capacity at this time. So I wanted to offer that clarification, and Marsha, hopefully that sounds consistent with the conversations you've had. Thank you.
Thank you. That's, yeah, that's great. Thank you, Bo. So in that case, I think that we definitely need to have the department more formally evaluate the proposal before we would be able to move it forward, even though the staff would not be city staff, the, you know, the ability to properly maintain and manage that contract, I think, is important. On the question of the funding, have y'all approached the county? I think the school district should be off the table just due to relative levels of funds. And the school district is pretty seriously underfunded, not that the city and the county aren't, but I would say that of the three, I would least want to go to them for money. But I think that, you know, the county potentially could contribute some. I do, I'm not, I'm not worried about the money, though. We do, the funding is allocated, we did approve a million dollars for this initiative. This is half of what we're proposing to spend on ShotSpotter, which is far less useful. So I'm not, I'm not worried about $112,000. But if there were, if the county was interested in putting in some funding, then, you know, then that would be great. But I think, I'm interested to hear what my colleagues think, but I think the best, the best path forward would be to send this to the Community Safety Department for a more thorough evaluation and then bring it back to us. But I am very supportive, and I appreciate all of your work on this. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for that. I am in favor of, you know, putting a pause for a second so that the relevant department that you all are suggesting may be the home for it, at least for, at least oversight. But I do want to point out that, at least for me, this is urgency, these are decisions that we made already. This department, I mean, this task force has a million dollars, there's a reason why we did it. We did it partly because we learned from the Racial Equity Task Force work that we didn't resource that department. And so when there were, and from other task force or commissions, that we've kind of stumbled sometimes because we didn't resource them effectively to actually move the work forward. So I would say that while I very much support giving Ryan's department the opportunity to really think about, is this the right place? Do we have the capacity? All of that's critically important. I want to name that we, as a council, discuss gun violence on a regular basis, and this is an actual resource. And let me be clear, I mean, I'm pretty sure the CDC is actually banned from doing research around gun violence. We are purposely seeing the gun lobby stymie this kind of research, exactly what is being brought up here, and providing victims of violence an access point. I'm sure there is going to be pain points, recruiting them, making sure that we're creating a process that really is caring and trauma-informed. I think the folks here are very well aware of it. I think the folks on the Community Safety Task Force are very well aware of it, and I think our community partners are very well aware of it. But this is, to me, a very, very urgent need to understand. I think every single person on this dais has been touched by gun violence in some form or another, maybe not directly as victims or as family members as victims, but I can't think of a single person in this country right now who doesn't quite frankly have terror around gun violence. So there, to me, this is one of the most urgent things that we could do, and I hope that we don't pause it and we figure out how do we have some consensus. I mean, we need to pause it for the important questions raised around, does the new Community Safety Wellness Department have the capacity to take this on? If that's not the proper home, where does it go? But to say, oh, we're going to wait another year so that we can tie it to recommendations, I understand why the office is a bigger ask and why that might need to be, you know, we may need to wait for that and some of these bigger things, but I think this proposal is solid. I've heard the discussions at the task force, those are public discussions, so folks can go back and listen to those Zooms. I think that this task force has been extremely intentional in really listening to community and what community needs are around community safety and wellness. And so I urge my colleagues, while we may need to pause for some small details, which to me means it could come back soon and not in a year, I really, I'm asking folks to really lean into the moment we're in and to really trust the folks who are asking for this resource.
Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do trust the folk. I think this is a good idea. And I just want to be clear, and because I want to make sure that the characterizations are correct. ShotSpotter would have been free for a year, but there was a different council at the time. And it's a different council that attached a million dollars to this task force, and it was not a unanimous vote. And I, you know, to suggest that we gave them a million dollars because we took a lesson from not funding the Racial Equity Task Force, I don't think that's accurate, because we could have retroactively funded the Racial Equity Task Force if that were the case. Nothing stopped us from applying the lesson in real time. We gave them the million dollars because at that time, there was a council who was amenable to the ask of Durham Beyond Policing. The million dollars was not, it was characterized, I think, as a down payment on what they may come up with. There were no, there was no rubric around the million dollars, there was no guidance, there was no set of rules. It was not, and it's not discretionary, that whatever they say they want to do with it, they're going to do with it. The million dollars was as a result of a differently configured council. That's how it happened. So I just want to be very clear about that. With that said, it's been over a year, and gunfire has been going off that entire year. And I, you know, I don't know when the idea was first brought, but this is the first time we're hearing from this task force, $20,000 out of a million dollars later, after a year, while gun violence has been going on in our city every night. So, yeah, we've all been touched by gun violence, and we're all, and again, like ShotSpotter, this is reactionary. This isn't preventing gunfire, this isn't a root cause initiative, this is something that happens after people have been shot. So once again, here we are, talking about reactions, which is fine. So I just want to be clear of how that million dollars was set aside, and if we want to, you know, compare costs of this relative to ShotSpotter, ShotSpotter could have been free, but times were different, and times are different now. And that's the nature of democracy, that's the nature of, you know, the political context. But I want to be very clear, I'm not against this idea. I am against, however, tasking the Community Safety Department now with more-- listen, if they could have asked for this when they did their budget proposal, my assumption is that there's a reason they didn't. I also do not see, while I think the work of the Safety and Wellness Task Force is vital and important, I do not see them, for me at least, as the fount or source of altering departmental workflow. That's not how I view, potentially it could ultimately, but when we have a budget before us right now, that's about to go live at the end of June, we have a brand-new department that's got its hands full, that we're all pulling for, that's got some vital pilots that we haven't even gotten off the ground yet, I think it's important to go with what we have established now. And let's, listen, this is the first time I'm looking at it, and I'm getting asked for money the same day, the first time I'm seeing it. I'd like to look at it some more. I'd like, I'd like to go ask the county, do you got five on it? Would y'all like to participate in funding this proposal? And I don't think there's anything wrong with that. It's been a year already. A couple more months, I don't think, will hurt us in taking a look at doing this proposal right. My recommendation would be that we get through this budget cycle-- that we get through this budget cycle and then set a date when we can come back and take another look at it, see if other folk will go in with us and go forward. I support the idea. I just don't support doing it right now. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And I would be in agreement with that. I do think that we need to make sure of the relationship between the new department and this recommendation, what exactly that will be. Give them time to look at that and iron that out. I think that is an important question. And I also think it's important as being fiscally responsible for, you know, our part in that we ask our other partners to see if they're willing also to provide some necessary funds. And once again, I would, you know, go back and ask Duke as well that we come out of this equally in terms of the money asked. So I am flexible in terms of if someone would like to offer a timeline. We are, you know, approaching the June 21st date when we'll hopefully approve our budget. So I don't want to task, you know, we're already down that road. I know our city is also looking at those ARPA funds and they're doing that. So I'm conscious that we will speak it and then people have to change up their whole lifestyle, literally, to try to make accommodating. And their plates are already full. So I'm really, really hesitant about putting something else on them before we take our break. I'm really hesitant about that. Councilman Williams?
Councilwoman Freeman, is it okay if I go? I know you had your hand up. Okay, no worries. So I keep using the phrase "a suite of options", and I consider it as one of those. And welcome to being in the middle of this debate now on both sides of the school of thought on the council. I, just one concern regarding Duke. And I'm, I'll make this question rhetorical. I don't want to, I don't want you to answer it right now. But I'd like to know how long we have with you all being a partner in this, you know, as a funding partner. I am concerned about, you know, funds expiring. And I, the other concern I have is I saw in the proposal, it was 40 potential participants. So I feel I'm a little uncomfortable comparing, you know, apples and oranges. ShotSpotter versus this prescription for repair are two separate things, but it's the same council with two separate dynamics. I don't want to put you all in the middle of that. And I'll say to my colleagues, I'm also uncomfortable with, you know, some things we give a chance, some things we don't give a chance, you know? And I say that for myself as well. But in regards of Duke as a partner, I'm appreciative of that. I hope that you will consider, you know, continuing to be a partner, and I hope that we can expand. But my biggest concern is I don't want us to address public safety in such a fragmented way. We have $21 million left in ARPA that we're going to address. And Mayor, that's what I was about to speak on. We have ARPA next year. We have $1 million in this task force. We have 4.7 in the Community Safety Department, which has its own task, you know? I, if we're going to do it, let's do it not only right, but do it big, you know? I, in regards of other partners that are playing a role in this, I know it's, I've been, I was over there asking Councilmember Johnson about the construct of this. It's an inter-local, inter-local relationship, I believe. I don't know enough about the financial commitments on the front end of this. It's happened well before me. But I will say that I hope that the work that the Community Safety Task Force is doing, now that we have ARPA funding and potential other funding that's coming down, infrastructure and the budget that we're about to pass with the Community, with the Public Safety Department, parks and rec, I hope that, and I can't micromanage you, but I hope that as you go forward, you consider your recommendations being a part of that fabric. And I think that's how we can have a bigger impact. So I do think that there is muster to, Mayor Protem's argument of, we seen it today and we're going to vote on it today. I'm either way with the pleasure of the council, but I really do, you know, I think we can probably do more. So I'll invite you to expand on this work in the task force with the bigger overall project that, or recommendation that comes back to us at a later time.
Well, I'll just say one quick comment to that. I certainly can't speak for all of Duke, but the funds, we came through Duke, came through a specific grant program that sort of launched this whole conversation. We've actually been developing this almost over a year. And things take time to evolve. I, my one sentiment I will share is that from Duke leadership is they are thrilled and honored to partner with the city in this effort. They are, we will follow your lead. And our job is to be a responsible citizen. And if it takes modifying this partnership, we'll modify the partnership. And I'll go to Pat with that. I think that is our duty. But at the end of the day, this is our community effort and we want to work with you to address this in a very comprehensive way. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I look forward to expanding this work.
Councilwoman Freeman?
I was just going to ask, what would we be doing with the item? I guess, because I'm hearing that it needed to be reviewed. So that means it's going back to staff. And if you needed a motion for that, I was going to make the motion.
Just in hearing all of the discussion around this item, we certainly will bring the item back to the administration if it is the pleasure of the City Council and review some of the logistics around what the task force is recommending to house the program, as Bo Ferguson has mentioned, as well as timing and bring those recommendations back to you all for consideration.
All right, thank you. So we will land that back in your hands. Is that a thumbs up from everybody? Goes back to administration? All right, thank you. Thank you, City Manager Page. Just want to make sure that we are correct on our pulled items. I do want to note that for Ms. Bergman and Ms. Stompelkamp, on their cards, their sign-up cards, they had indicated they were here on Agenda Items 15 and 19, which is incorrect. And I have noted that, Madam Clerk, on their cards that they were actually here for Items 15 and 17. So I do not believe that Item 19 was actually pulled. Now, I think that we have covered all of our pulled items except for, I think that Councilwoman Caballero had pulled, initially stated some comment. I've been having a hard time hearing. It's like my ears don't work when I got a mask on for some reason. But I think she may have pulled or said something about Item 16.
Yeah, I'll just follow up with staff directly because of the time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I believe that that will conclude all of our pulled items unless I've missed something. All right, very good. Now, we have a couple of, some hearings this afternoon, some public hearings this afternoon, but presentations, I'm sorry. Presentations, public hearing has legal connotations to it. However, it's 4:17 and I know most humans have been sitting now for one hour and three hours and 17 minutes. So we do need to take a break before we start those hearings, if you don't mind. If you allow us to have about 10 minutes, we'll come back in at 4:27. I give about ample time to kind of stretch out. So we'll get ready for our final presentations this afternoon. We'll come back at 4:27.
Megan, from the moment Deepak opened, it's been a hit. Everybody knows that. With great Broadway shows and musical performances, you don't have any trouble at all selling tickets. So why are you providing this kind of programming to all Durham residents? Why are you making Deepak so accessible?
Well, I think, I mean, you're right. Deepak has had a lot of success, but that success is because of our community. It's because we have such a dedicated, really enthusiastic audience and community. So I work really hard to create opportunities so that we really have something for everybody and that all in our community can get into the theater and see some live entertainment. So I think that we're getting better and better at that each year. We're adding programs and really trying to make our doors open to all and are building accessible to the community.
There's no place like home. Home is where the heart is.
Hey, can I help you? Oh, thank you, thank you so much.
It is our place of safety and warmth. Home is where love resides, memories are created, and laughter warms the heart. That's why the Durham Human Relations Division is committed to enforcing the Fair Housing Act, which prohibits unlawful discrimination based on race, color, disability, religion, sex, familial status, or national origin.
Here's some tips to ensure that your garbage and recycling gets picked up. One, your carts should be put out for collection before 6:00 a.m. on your collection day. Two, your carts should be at least three feet from all other objects such as mailboxes, telephone poles, fire hydrants, trees, and other carts. Three, your carts should be no more than three feet from the curb. Four, no vehicles should be blocking your carts. The mechanical arms on our trucks need direct access to your carts and cannot reach around vehicles. To find more information about garbage and recycling pickups, go to this web address.
The Durham City Council meetings and Planning Commission meetings are now available to livestream on all devices via the City of Durham's social media accounts. To watch, simply go to City of Durham NC on YouTube, Facebook, or Twitter. Devices include phones, tablets, laptops, desktops, streaming boxes and sticks, and smart TVs. The easiest way to view the livestream on smart TVs and streaming devices, such as the Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV, is via the YouTube app. Now you can follow along with the latest developments in the Durham community at dinner, your kid's game, the mall, in bed, during a breather, in the bathtub, and even on the International Space Station.
I count on Durham for awesome adventures and great bike shops.
I know I can count on Durham for great sport and every season.
I always count on Durham for amazing cultural events.
I count on Durham for its innovative ideas and the determination to bring them to life.
I count on Durham for community and a place for everyone.
I count on Durham to do a good job and to celebrate our success.
Did you know that the City of Durham counts on these individuals? In a city of more than 260,000 people, you're looking at residents who are making their voice count. People who care about the past, the present, and the future of the City of Durham. And you know what? It doesn't matter how mature.
Or young.
Whether you're passionate about the economy, the arts scene, or the plight of the homeless.
In fact, we have nearly 30 boards, committees, and commissions that you can participate on.
The requirements are to be a Durham city resident and be current on your Durham city and county taxes.
Durham is your home. You can count on Durham to be there for you.
Can we count on you to be there for our city?
Can we count on you to be there for Durham?
Can we count on you to be there for our city?
Can we count on you to be there for Durham?
So come on, get involved, apply today. We can count on Durham. But can Durham count on you?
¿Sabías que la Ciudad de Durham tiene servicios de interpretación y traducción disponibles? La Ciudad adoptó un Plan de Acceso a la Lengua para proporcionar servicios de lengua y ayudar a los no hablantes de inglés a tener acceso a los servicios y programas de la Ciudad sin una barrera de lengua. A través del Plan de Acceso a la Lengua de la Ciudad, los residentes tienen derecho a solicitar interpretación y traducción gratis, recibir traducciones de documentos vitales y comunicaciones de emergencia en español y presentar complaintes de discriminación de lengua o de fallar en proveer adecuadamente servicios en concordancia con la política del Plan de Acceso a la Lengua de la Ciudad. Para obtener más información sobre los esfuerzos de la Ciudad de Acceso a la Lengua, visite durhamnc.gov/languageaccess.
Bien, todos estamos volviendo. Estamos pasando un poco lento, pero vamos a cambiar el orden esta tarde. Tenemos un Górra Triángulo aquí para la presentación, el item número siete,
Triangle Board unfortunately voted to cancel the light rail project. This is a slide that we have shared in the past and we've gotten feedback that we needed to provide more detail behind it, which we have done. But overall, between the beginning of the project and June 30th, 2021, I'm sure you're familiar with this number, $157 million. The breakout of those dollars are as shown on this chart, and again, Catherine, we'll go into quite a bit of detail. We had $131 million that was spent on management and design. This is a lot of the work that has to get done, frankly. And again, I want to just say that FTA worked with us all along the way, looking at the money that we were spending, looking at the resources that we had in place to make sure that we had what we needed to deliver on this project. We had $16 million in administration and staff support costs. We had an office here in Durham to ensure that a lot of the connections that needed to be made when we had to come over to City Hall or have a meeting, instead of Go Triangle, having to spend money and time running back and forth between Go Triangle and here, we situated an office right in the heart of Durham to facilitate a lot of great discussion. We spent 6.2 million on real estate acquisitions and other expenses. We had some professional services, which were about 3.8 million. And again, that total was $157 million. I want to talk a bit again about those expenses, the $157 million. As I mentioned, Durham and Orange worked very well together on this project. At the beginning, the cost split between the two counties was 81 and a half percent, was, excuse me, was 80% 20 is that's what ended up being the average, 80% in Durham and 20% in Orange. The initial cost share was 77% Durham and 23% Orange. But after the renegotiation to the 81 and a half percent Durham, 18.5% Orange, we ended up at 80/20. That was a great concession on Durham's part because they were committed to the project and they recognized that in terms of the funding and some of the other changes that needed to be made, that Durham was able, was willing to go on the hook for a little bit more money. Of the total, I mentioned the $131 million on management and design. That is about 83% of the project, which is what we would expect early on before we get into construction. $16 million was spent on administration and staff. On a project this size, you expect somewhere between 10 and 12%, and we were right in line with that. We spoke about the real estate, which was 6.2 million, and there was another 3.8 million on professional services and operations, which was about 3% of the total. Catherine is going to spend some time talking to you about the various consultants that we used on the project and who they are, what they did, and answer questions you may have about that.
Thank you, Sandra. Good afternoon. Sandra said I'm going to go into some detail to answer the questions of who received this money and what did they receive it for. So Sandra explained the largest category of funding was for management and design expenses. In order to construct a project that's overall cost is in excess of $2 billion, you have to design it before you can get to that construction phase. So I'm going to go through on the next series of slides, an explanation of the four major consulting contracts on the project at the time of its discontinuation. Also get into a couple of other smaller dollar contracts that are in this management and design category. So all of the consultant contracts that I'm going to describe here were procured using an open competitive process with qualifications-based selection, which is the type of procurement process that's required by the FTA and by the state for these architecture and engineering type of contracts for design. So our first one, the project development consultants, Go Triangle procured services from URS Corporation for this. That's a large national firm, international firm, really headquartered in California. During the course of their work on the project, URS was acquired by AECOM, so you'll see URS and AECOM in here. Also a very large firm, over 50,000 employees, have local offices in North Carolina, in Raleigh, Morrisville, and Charlotte. So this firm was engaged to perform services during the project development phase, which is the environmental review phase and preliminary engineering. So they developed all of the environmental documentation to get that record of decision that Sandra mentioned, as well as engineering to an approximately 30% level for the project that was then handed off to the general engineering consultant, which I'll talk about next. So in all, in this category, about $27 million of expenses. Second major contract, this is the largest one, was with HDR. This was the general engineering consultant. Again, this is a large national firm. They're headquartered in Nebraska with local offices in Charlotte and Raleigh and a couple of others in North Carolina. They were engaged, as I mentioned, to be the general engineering consultant. So that's taking the 30% preliminary plans and developing those to be prepared for construction. So all the way to 100% ready for bid. So this involves field survey investigations, geotechnical borings, all that, and then development of the plans and specifications, as well as the environmental management to ensure that those commitments made and the record of decision make their way into the design and then ultimately are implemented. The third category of major consultants that we had was the program management consultant. For that, we engaged with HNTB, again, a large national firm. This one's a little smaller than the others, but still a big firm with local offices in Raleigh and Charlotte. HNTB was engaged to provide program management services, which is basically an extension of agency staff to manage a program as large as this, as complex as this, and with disciplines that Go Triangle does not currently have, rail operations, safety specific to rail operations, and then also oversight and staffing for the real estate acquisition program as an example. So in all, HNTB's team was paid about $12 million for their services. The last major contract that we had was with a joint venture of Gannett Fleming and WSP. Again, national firms. Gannett Fleming is on the smaller side. WSP is one of the larger ones, again, 50,000-plus employees. So this joint venture was engaged to be the construction management consultant. So during the course of the project, before its discontinuation, they were paid about $3.2 million for services related to preparation for construction. If the project had continued, they would have been doing the inspection and construction management during that construction phase. So their pre-construction services included support for cost estimating, detailed scheduling, constructability assessments, and workforce development planning. So that's a summary of the four major consulting firms. The next few slides, you'll see the detail of all of the subconsultant firms that were included on those teams. Before we get to that, as I mentioned, just a few other smaller contracts in this management and design expense category, about $1 million spent on a financial consultant to support the modeling, risk management, and development of financial plans necessary to submit to the Federal Transit Administration. We spent about $615,000 to procure e-Builder project management software. That's one element that has been retained by the agency. When the project was discontinued, we repurposed that software to be used for our small and mid-sized capital projects. So we use that today on projects that we implement regionally, as well as projects that we implement on behalf of the City of Durham. For example, the bus stop improvement program that Go Triangle manages, we use this e-Builder software to manage those projects, maintain the documentation, and do the financial management for that. We also spent about $400,000 on design review reimbursements. That's reimbursements to partners like the City of Durham for reviewing all those engineering designs. Typically, local partners, even the state DOT, NRR, don't have staffs large enough to review designs in timely manner when there's a huge project going on. So it's typical for agencies like ours to reimburse for staff time and consultant time to review those plans and engage in a timely manner. So as I said, I have a number of slides here that list all of the firms that were on each of these teams. You'll see these split out into the disadvantaged business enterprises, which is similar to the MWEBE program or HUB program that you're familiar with. You'll see here on this slide, the goals that we had for each of the contracts was between 8.8% on the low end and 15% on the high end. You'll see the actuals on the next couple of slides. And then we also have a listing of the non-DBE subcontractors as well. So on this slide, this shows all the DBE contractors, the dollar amounts paid to the firms, as well as the race, ethnicity, gender, and location of the firms. You'll see on here a mix of North Carolina-based firms and firms based elsewhere. Some of the firms based elsewhere were selected by the primes for their prior work on other projects or for discipline-specific, expertise-specific to rail programs. So you see here on the left-hand side, the actual DBE participation generally in excess of those goals, in the range of 10.7% to 18.5%, as opposed to the 8.8% to 15% that you saw on the previous slide. Next slide here, again, the non-DBE contractors. This is the list of the firms, the amounts, and then the locations. Same on this one, about 50/50 between firms based in North Carolina and then firms based elsewhere. So I'm going to hand it back over to Sandra to walk you through the administration and staff, and then I'll come back to talk about real estate in a few minutes.
Thanks, Catherine. So one thing that is very important about FTA, and again, they don't give money unless they're very comfortable that we have the capacity that is needed to maintain and run such a large capital project. So they spent a lot of time with us looking at, they asked for resumes for everybody that was on the team, they asked for org charts, they interviewed individuals just to make sure that we had the capability and the capacity to deliver on this project and the right mix of both internal staff and consultants. So we did have administrative staff support. We had, as I mentioned, a project office that was located in downtown Durham. We spent about $14.9 million on the staff and administrative support, which I indicated is about 10% of the total of the project, which is right in line with what you would expect. The staff did quite a bit of work, the design and engineering plans for the project, all of the requirements that FTA has in place for a new starts program. It is very, very cumbersome, it's a lot of detail, and we had an expert who literally spent every day just going through, making sure we didn't miss a mark where FTA was concerned. We also did a lot of project coordination with our local government partners. We looked at the real estate acquisition activities, and we had an individual who led that. We had to use our legal department, obviously, for our land use entitlement and support for local planning efforts along with the real estate. Lot of communications with our project property owners. Go Triangle took that very seriously. We wanted to reach out often, often and more often, to any property owners that might be, and businesses that would be impacted by this light rail. And we had a team of people who went out on a regular basis to meet with people and answer questions. My team was responsible for the financial modeling, the budgeting, the procurement, and the administration piece. So FTA, again, spent a lot of time understanding and making sure that I had the resources in place for what I needed. And then we had legal, obviously, a legal staff that was engaged throughout all areas of the project. And the other professional services, we had about $3.8 million. A significant amount of that was related to the redesign of an impacted facility at UNC Chapel Hill. It was a golf course. And so we had to do work to ensure that any issues, concerns were mitigated based on what we were doing with the rail project. We also set up a nonprofit fundraising venture. What we hope to have occur with that is to allow individuals, businesses, corporations that wanted to support not just the light rail project, but transit in general, to be able to contribute. This was a nonprofit, again, a nonprofit organization. Individuals could donate tax-free. And so we had a consultant to come in to actually look at the potential for what might be available if we took on such a project and set it up, which we did. We also had our outside legal counsel, Parker Poe, and Bernstein, which we needed for a lot of the work that was being done. And then there were some minor financial services that we needed during the project development phase. I'll turn it back over to Catherine to talk about the real estate piece.
Thanks, Sandra. Sandra said about $6.1 million was spent on expenses related to acquisition of real estate for the rail operations and maintenance facility. If the project had moved forward, a lot of other property would have been needed along the alignment for the location of the tracks and park and ride facilities and so forth. But at the time of the project's discontinuation, the maintenance facility was the only property that had been acquired in advance to ensure that it could proceed through the entitlements process necessary to prepare for construction. So about $4.7 million was actually spent on the acquisition cost to the property owners. The additional $1.3 million was for the related expenses, administrative things like appraisals, site reviews, site preparation, as well as relocation payments to folks that were relocated, and the outreach and communication that Sandra mentioned earlier. So in total, you see the properties here, I think it's about 13 properties, all located on Farrington Road, between Farrington Road and I-40, in the western part of Durham. So as Sandra mentioned earlier, Go Triangle owns these properties now. There's a memo in your packet about potential disposition options. We have been awaiting conclusion of the updated transit plan to identify potential other transit use before moving forward with disposition of either of a whole property and then repayment to the transit plan for those dollars that were used, or potentially identifying a portion of the site that could be used for another transit purpose. So that's more to come on that. And I think that concludes our presentation. I'm going to ask Chuck to come back up here, and I'm happy to turn it back.
Thank you all so much for this today. I would open it up to my colleagues for any questions that they may have. None? Any questions?
All right, I'll start. I will ask a series of just really direct, simple questions, because I really hope this is the last time we have to talk about light rail. But I want to make sure that, you know, the reason why it'll be the last time is because we just really clearly put all the information out there of what's happening. And then I'll ask a series of questions about what's next. All right. So if I'm understanding the timeline, we, about a little over a decade ago, we came up with this idea of, you know, regional transit. And I think probably, you did a good job at explaining what happened to the money. Help us, help our constituents understand the funding structure. Let's start there. Who funds what? Because the regular everyday Durhamite looks and say, all right, Durham, your transportation department is failing with the transit system. But it gets really complicated. And I'll ask that you spell out acronyms so that folks who are listening to this or can go back and reference it can be educated. So I really mean it. I don't want you guys coming before us to talk about this again. I'm ready to talk about what's next. So who funds what? How does this transit work? And Sean, if you need to tag team then.
Sandra, you want to talk to that one? Thank you.
So let me talk about in terms of the light rail project and the Durham Transit Plan. I mentioned the half-cent sales tax. So the dollars that funded the light rail project that fund the Durham County Transit Plan, at which the city gets the benefit of some of those dollars, there is the half-cent sales tax, which was passed specifically to support transit. It's a transit-related tax. There is also a, and the purpose of all of this was to have not just a rail project, but to have enhanced and increased bus service. So we had the half-cent sales tax, which was anticipated at that time that the majority of the money would be supporting the rail project. But there is also a $3 registration tax that comes to Go Triangle to provide expanded and enhanced service in Durham. And there is a $7 registration tax that is used to provide enhanced service in Durham. The City of Durham has access to those dollars. And there is also a piece that allows for increased cost of existing service, because obviously you expect that the baseline service is going to go up. And so additionally, the City of Durham has the opportunity to use up to 50% of that $7 registration tax for increased cost of existing service. So your transit plan is funded by, and plus the rental tax, 50%, a portion of the rental tax that Go Triangle receives. So it's a half-cent sales tax, which was passed as a transit tax. There's a $3 tax, there's this registration tax, there's a $7 registration tax, and there's a portion of the rental tax. So that is what encompasses the transit plan. That is what is used to fund the projects that were expected to happen, not just the light rail, but in transit as a whole.
Durham City or Durham County?
Durham County, it's Durham County tax. Durham County voters voted for the half-cent sales tax.
So Durham County folks voted for this?
Mm-hmm. For the benefit of the city. So the transit plan funds a lot of the activities that Sean receives the benefit of, as well as Go Triangle in support of Durham.
Yeah. So we have access to the funding by way of the county?
Yes. So what happens is every year, there's a work plan. You've probably heard about the transit plan and the transit work.
Which is the budget?
Yeah.
Or what we're going to do?
Which turns into the budget. So there's a, we have what we call a staff working group. There's a representative from Go Triangle, from the MPO, and from Durham County. And that is going to change with the new agreements. There's a vote each year during the budgeting process on what projects should be moved forward, and they come to Go Triangle for final approval.
And all governing bodies have to vote on that, from the county to the MPO to Go Triangle?
The, yes, the three representatives.
The three representatives. So Go Triangle is the regional facilitator of transit.
The MPO.
The MPO is Durham and Orange County.
Yeah. They're two separate staff working groups, but yes, it's Durham County, the MPO, and Go Triangle. Those are the three entities that vote and recommend as of right now. We're working in ILA, so that's subject to change. But as of right now, those are the three entities that vote.
And Durham County.
Well, they recommend, let me say it this way, they recommend what should go in the plan. Go Triangle, the board, as part of the budget, votes on it.
And in the presentation, it showed up to 2018, I believe, that all bodies voted, and then 2019, project canceled or ended. Could you talk about what happened in that point right there? Because it seemed, the presentation looks like it, everything was going well, and then it just ended. So I want to, I want to make sure folks understood, understand what happened between that year.
I'm going to let my illustrious CEO articulate exactly what happened there.
So, you know, my understanding is that, that there were several agreements that needed to be had. One with Duke, because the light rail was going to go through their campus. Also, the North Carolina Railroad Corridor was going to be used for a portion of the light rail project. And there was also some state funds that were going to be made available for the project, in which the state legislature had imposed a timeline on when these funds could be available, or up until when they could be available for the project. My understanding is that the agreements with Duke and NRR were not able to be executed, and also the timeline was expiring for the availability of state funds. And that caused the board to act to cancel the project because it was no longer viable from that standpoint. So the right-of-way was going away, state funding was going away. How much was the state funding, Catherine? $127 million? $147 million of state funding was going to disappear on the project, but at the time it was canceled.
Is that $147 million up to $157 million?
No, that was monies that were going to be spent after the project got into, into construction.
Got you. So once we had gone past the engineering phase to get to the actual...
Yeah, you get to the full funding grant agreement, and then the other funds are going to kick in. And we weren't going to make those dates, especially with the, you know, the project not being able to reach agreements on the, on the right-of-way.
Got you. And I'm going to ask my colleagues to bear with me on this, because I want to, this is, this is a lot of money that, you know, folks want to know what happened to, and we need to, you know, take the time to understand it. Is there, do we know why the General Assembly had a timeline, or what motivated that timeline on that funding? Was it fiscal, was it like the fiscal calendar or something?
So I don't know. I don't know if it was on the fiscal calendar, if it was arbitrary. I think at one point, there was an agreement that the state would put some money into the project, and then, and they decided that at a certain point, the money was not going to be available.
So I would not assume that they knew we were not going to be able to get something so big done so quick. But it does lead me to want to explore that. Okay, so now that we have this, now that we have, you know, we're at the point where it's down, it's, 2019 is over. At what point did we introduce commuter rail?
I think about a year later, right? About a year later, we started the, Phase 1 started when? So it's about the same year as the project was canceled.
Phase 1 of the current feasibility study started around that same time. However, commuter rail was part of the Durham Transit Plan that was adopted back in 2011, 2012 timeframe as an element of that plan. And earlier studies, major investment study on commuter rail was initiated after the 2016 transit tax referendum in Wake County. The commuter rail project was sort of put on hold following the 2011, 2012 plan adoption because there was not a partner at that time in Wake with funding for transit. So in 2016, when the Wake funding came into play, studies for the commuter rail began with that major investment study. And then, as Chuck said, the kind of Phase 1 of the feasibility study that we're doing now started around the same time in 2019.
Thank you. In regards to regional transit, Durham is the common denominator. Light Rail with Orange, and now commuter rail with Wake, what lessons have we learned moving forward so that we won't find ourselves in another failed project?
So a lot of lessons. First of all, you know, making sure that you have your agreements in place, you know, before you take the project into advanced engineering is key. I participated in other large rail projects in Maryland, and that was a key component, having the MOUs in place prior to moving forward to full funding grant agreement. So there's that. There's also, I think that while the legislative bodies, the elected leaders had probably received reports from time to time, certainly more detail about the financial reports could be made to you and to the counties involved and other project stakeholders that may have a funding skin in the game, so to speak. There's that. APTA came in, APTA is the American Public Transportation Association. They came in and did a peer review on the project after the project was canceled. So a team of volunteers from APTA, namely, other transit agency folks from around the country, took a look, and they made some recommendations. I'll let Catherine talk a little bit about those recommendations. But certainly, I think there's, I think that was probably one of the top things that we could take away from the failed project and to, you know, take with us as we go forward on other large-scale projects if we choose to enter into them. Do you want to talk for a minute about the APTA report?
Sure. As Chuck said, there was an APTA peer review. There were a number of transit agency executives, including CEO of a transit agency, a number of other top-level executives from, from large transit agencies around the country with a successful track record of project delivery, who came in, interviewed members of Go Triangle's team, Go Triangle's board, as well as some project partners to understand the situation and make recommendations for moving forward. So there is a report available on our website with those recommendations. Developing additional in-house capacity for major project delivery prior to embarking on additional major projects was a key piece. Go Triangle's board, after that, brought in Chuck, who, as he mentioned, has a big project experience from another major, actually one of the largest FTA capital projects from around the country. There were other recommendations related to board governance, related to taking incremental steps, such as the feasibility study that we're completing now for the commuter rail, to really assess in-depth risks to project success early in the project and develop a broad base of lasting community support. It's very difficult to maintain a high level of buy-in for a complex... It's very difficult to maintain a high level of buy-in for a complex project that's very expensive, has funding uncertainty, particularly related to the state funding and the changes that we saw there. And so the recommendation really was to ensure that there's a strong foundation of regional support for a major project earlier and prior to moving forward. And to very carefully evaluate that with the board and with project partners, early and along the way.
I would also add that the Phase Two of the feasibility study that's going on right now for commuter rail reflects a lot of that. We're invested heavily in figuring out what the construction challenges are early. A large portion of the $9 million that has been spent on this phase of study goes into figuring out the complexities of Durham, and building another one or two rail lines through Durham, and how the impacts are, what the construction challenges are, what the challenges to schedule would be. Cary is also complex, to bring a lot more trains through. There's also some issues that we need to address in Raleigh, at the train station there, maybe having to operate off a separate platform. You know, also, doing a heck of a lot more public outreach, I think, than was done last time, we've done this time. So investing in ensuring that we know what the problems are ahead of time, what the land acquisition issues are, what the other complexities of the project are, where the points of risk are, are gonna be detailed in this feasibility study in a lot greater detail. Even taking on some of the issues, like the light rail suffered from having disagreement with Norfolk Southern and NCRR, what the issues are, how the project would be insured, and who would be indemnified if there was a problem. You know, that issue, at the time of the project was, the light rail project was canceled, was still not resolved. In large part, we have resolved that issue in NCRR and NS right now. So we got that done early. I think it was essential in order to gain their cooperation for the commuter rail lights, excuse me, the commuter rail study, that we resolved those issues early this time. So, and I think this is a, I think what you have here is gonna be a much better product, much more thorough, much more comprehensive. It'll include a host of recommendations, from building out the entire project to segments. And I think this feasibility study will offer a lot more to, to the region decision-makers, you know, as we complete it next month.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll yield, and I have a few more questions later. Yield to my colleagues.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Williams, for your line of inquiry. This will be my first time speaking about light rail in public since March 2019, for a number of reasons. When, first of all, this was gonna be a $2 billion project. So I wanna put that 157 million in context with the $2 billion, much like we have to do with our 95 million affordable housing bond in context with the 160 million plan. I think it was billed, at that time, it would've been the largest infrastructure project to date in North Carolina, if it had gone through. All kinds of economic boom would come to Durham and the region. For black folk in Hayti, it was billed as the physical reconnecting of Hayti with downtown that 147 had dissected. So a lot of people's hopes and dreams were tied up in this. I said I wouldn't speak about it again, because my life got really weird during that period. Because one of the things, and I was looking through the report, so let me start this way. One of the things that's not listed in here is that some of our real estate acquisitions were acquired through eminent domain. I remember when the folk from Farrington Road filled this room up, when we got the land for the rail operation maintenance facility, we used eminent domain. When I suggested perhaps using eminent domain on Duke, all hell broke loose. And, and, and it's not that I was anti-Duke. For me, it was an equity and fairness issue, because the eminent domain threshold had already been crossed for regular citizens. So we learned the valuable lesson about power in this city, and who really wields power. Light rail will go down as a case study on who really wields power in this city. So when you talk about government officials and governing bodies, you know, what we have the stomach and political will to do, I just merely recommended it. I got threatened on TV, low-key, by executives, all kind of crazy messages to me, for simply saying, "Why don't we treat everybody fairly in this process?" So then March 2019 came, and the vote was, was had. I'm gonna say something. For me, the money was never missing. It was something far worse. It was wasted. We knew where the money went. We bought a ring. We hired a caterer. We paid for the hall. We bought cases of champagne. We hired the DJ. We rented suits and had dresses made. We paid for tickets for the honeymoon, but the wedding never happened. And then we wanted to go back and ask all of those service providers for the money back. And they said, "I'm sorry, it's non, we already cooked the food. We already popped the champagne." It was non-refundable. We wouldn't be having this conversation if light rail had come to fruition, because it would be $2 billion, and, and 157 million would look like nothing compared to the $2 billion. So we are here because the wedding didn't happen. So there was, there was never any question in my mind, you know, because if the money were missing, then at least we could go after somebody and put them in jail. You know, the Attorney General could prosecute, we could investigate. If there was malfeasance, if the money was stolen. But we can't put anybody in jail, because it wasn't stolen, it was wasted, which is far worse and far more hurtful. So, so, you know, when we talk about real estate acquisitions, I wanna be very clear that some of this was who we're willing to flex on and who we're not willing to flex on, as a government. And I'm gonna be very clear about that. So, so, moving forward, I guess my question is, will, will our governing bodies commit, and are they prepared, if we have to use eminent domain again for commuter rail, are we prepared to use it equitably, uniformly, and across the board? And do we foresee that matter even coming up? And do we need to start working on agreements now?
So, so for commuter rail, it's, it's a different ballgame, right? So it's gonna be in the North Carolina Railroad Corridor. All the rail, all the trains will operate within the corridor. None of it goes through Duke. And it's all in, the corridor is generally 200 feet wide throughout. It gets a little tighter here in Durham, because, you know, you have buildup around the corridor, around the, around the tracks, and more so than the other areas of the, of the Clayton, West Durham, you know, area that we're looking at right now. Where there might be some property acquisition, might be for the stations. You know, so where the stations are. And I would have to say that, you know, we have a plan for the stations. We, we haven't looked at if there's, yet, if there's a need for eminent domain. Obviously, you wanna go to a property owner, and you wanna have a good buyer-seller relationship with that owner. If it's a business, you wanna be able to accommodate a move for them, you know. But if there's, if there's a need for eminent domain, we don't know what that is right now, if there is a need for any eminent domain. But the station footprints are gonna be a heck of a lot smaller than all the property that was gonna be needed for the, for the light rail project, because the light rail project was, you know, it needed its own right-of-way when it got outside of the NCRR corridor. Needed to go through Duke, needed to go through other areas, needed to go through streets. And in some places, those streets would have to be widened. So certainly, you know, a lot more challenging is the property acquisition for a light rail. Similar to the project I worked on in Maryland, we had a $225 million property budget, which we exceeded by $20 million, because of all the property that needed to be done. But for the most part, even in Maryland, there was very little eminent domain used. It was mostly, it was a cooperative relationship with the, with the property owners, for the most part. There was times we had to go to court and reach a settlement with the owners in order to get possession of the property. But, you know, I think for the majority of the property on the Maryland project, we didn't need it. I don't see, and that was a light rail project. So light rail, again, in the street, going through, you know, parks and things like that. So it was much more complex. This project is different. So until we get into some kind of design, we won't know exactly how much property we'll need for stations and for parking lots. You know, hopefully, if there is parking and station development, we can do that in cooperation with developers that would want to be situated and built near a station. But right now, you know, I can say that the eminent domain issue is, is gonna be minor compared to what the light rail.
Well, you'll understand our caution, because we've been heard before. Another nuance of some of those engineering costs were changes, because Duke wanted the rail elevated past the emergency room. And anytime you change engineering drawings, architectural diagrams, that's big money. So even before, we couldn't negotiate the final agreement with Duke, we were already spending money to accommodate their wishes through engineering drawings and architectural changes for the light rail. So some of that money is that. Now, is it criminal? No. Is it waste? Yes. And, and, and so, again, the money not missing, it's wasted. It's wasted money. And I hope that the lessons, you know, Councilmember Williams asked about the lessons. I hope, moving forward, you know, those lessons will, will be taken to heart, and that a healthy birth and allowance for skepticism and concern on behalf of people of Durham will be allowed. Because they, you know, they pluck the string, the most emotional and historically important string for black folk, that Hayti would be restored and rejoined to downtown in a, in a tangible, physical way, through light rail, till the big boys showed up in the room and, and, you know. But anyway, or big girls, big folk showed up in the room. But hey, it feels good to talk about it again. I've sat through a few iterations of these. This has been the most detailed one thus far, and I hope it brings some sense of understanding and comfort, if not relief, to the folk of Durham. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Cabell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon. Thank you so much for being here. I appreciate the very detailed presentation. This microphone really doesn't like me. I just had a couple of questions, not so much about, not so much about the presentation itself, but one of the things that you talked about with your lessons learned is around the incremental steps around design. I'm just curious, with the commuter rail, knowing some of the design complexities, especially in the downtown corridor, are we thinking that an incremental or phased approach will be a better fit than trying to do the entire corridor at once?
So, that's a good question. And I would have to say that it really depends on, with the three county partners that are involved right now, Johnston, Wake, and Durham, each county has different priorities. Each county has different transportation issues. And you're gonna experience your growth differently, right? So I think Wake is gonna experience the most growth in between the RTP and Raleigh corridor. You're gonna get a heck of a lot of growth here in Durham. Even the 15501 corridor to your, to your South and West is gonna get a lot of growth, although this project doesn't cover that. So, and what, and what, what do you need right now in order to transport folks around, to get them to jobs and to other opportunities? So that's a decision here. If, if Durham said, okay, you know, heck, we're, we're, we wanna be part of commuter rail, but maybe, maybe we wanna be in a different phase. What we're gonna do is provide a study that's gonna show the whole thing, from Clayton all the way to West Durham. And it's gonna have all the costs put in. So you're gonna get everything in. So you're gonna get a large cost, you're gonna get for, for the large project. But that doesn't mean, at the end of the day, that it's Johnston County decides, for instance, that they don't wanna be part of it. That doesn't mean that a segment can't be dropped out, or one segment could be prioritized over another segment. I think it all depends on what the priorities are for the city and for the county in Durham, and also in Raleigh and Wake and Johnston, too. So they all gotta figure out their priorities. Right now, I was just in Johnston County on Monday. And Johnston County is dealing with a lot of issues related to growth. Many, many issues that they are, never had to experience before. And I would say that they are, I am not sure that they are gonna be in the first phase of commuter rail, based on the comments I received from Johnston County. So that's, so that's, that's, that's something that they've already asked. This question's already come up this week. I would say this project is scalable. And not only if you build a portion of it, I think it's also, this is just Phase One, right? So I think there's opportunities to expand the project after a segment is built. I think the big thing right now is to get a project into the corridor at North Carolina Railroad, and get the cooperation of the North Carolina Railroad, and Norfolk Southern, and Amtrak, all on board with the idea, and, and also, that commuter rail can be built here in the Triangle.
Thank you. Just a follow-up for that. So I understand that whole process, but then with the funding, you know, if, we're having to tie, and I'm gonna say this, so Johnston County doesn't have a transit tax. They don't collect one. So really, this is on Durham and Wake. And I do wanna name that for the public. They, they could pass that, but they haven't. So I think that's really important to note, who's actually paying for things. And then, secondly, when we, when we talk about our transit plan, and another thing that I do wanna name, which was said in the earlier part of the presentation, but I really wanna emphasize for residents, there's three parts of the stool, and the city of Durham is not one of those parts right now. The three parts of the stool are the MPO, which we do have representation on, Councilmember Williams and I are there. On Go Triangle Board, which the mayor sits there. And historically, the mayor has been there, former mayor Shul was in that seat as well. And then Durham County. So I just wanna also name, for our residents, that we are in adjacent power to a lot of this. We do not have direct oversight into the 20-year funding plan. It is, it is different agencies who lead this, while we do have some votes there. It's not the same thing, and I think there is confusion, especially when you have the city of Durham and county of Durham, as to who's doing what. And I think a lot of our residents are confused, so I wanna name that as well. My, my concern, so I hear what you're saying about the phased approach, or the segments and where we build it. But do we have to show the funding upfront? Like, if we're planning for the whole corridor, even if we're not saying we're gonna do, we're gonna focus on this, or this county's gonna do this piece, how do we frame that? Because if we're putting it in our transit plan, that we don't actually get to vote on, how do we make sure that we have enough dollars? Or are we just gonna be hoarding all the money into one project, even if it's not ready to go?
Okay, so, right now, the Durham County Transit Plan has a certain amount that is already targeted for commuter rail in its draft form. And the plan hasn't been finalized yet. It's gonna be in the next couple of months, it's gonna be finalized. What they have in there is a 20% share on a, close to a $2 billion number, right? I think that when the feasibility study is released, you know, it's gonna be, the numbers for the projects are gonna be more than that. Because in the year of expenditure, with the inflation like it's going today, you're gonna have a higher project cost coming. And we're still determining what that cost is gonna be. But when the feasibility study is finished, you're gonna have a higher. So there's gonna be, there's gonna be a very active discussion about, how, how does Durham County, in its transit plan, pay for, help pay for this project? Now, there is still a gap between what Durham County and what Wake County is, things that they have agreed to pay for. So, right, Wake County has not agreed to an 80-20 split. So, right, but Durham is at a 20%, because Durham has said that this is what we can afford and also accomplish our other transit priorities for bus service, which are very good priorities and, and very important to Durham. So, so there is still a lot of discussion that has to be had when the, when the feasibility is finalized, study is finalized. And I think that's a very healthy discussion to have. You know, transit plans are, you know, whether it be a, however the financing is found, whether it be through additional half penny on the sales tax, or some other mechanism, you know, I think, I think that the, that comes after the study is released. I know that you have a, Durham County has a very healthy budget set aside for commuter rail. But it's, it's certainly going to, there's gonna be more money needed based on that they have, they've kind of constrained their contribution for the entire project. So, again, the entire project could be scalable. It could be, if, you know, but I think that's, that's, that's a discussion that's yet to be had, because the report has not been finalized.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that, and I look forward to continuing this conversation. I've said it many times, we need to do everything around transit. We need to have commuter rail. We need to have a really excellent local bus system, and we need to have BRT, and we're gonna have to figure out how to get there. Thank you so much.
We do need all of that. I agree with you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cabell. Are there any other questions of Mr. Letuca or his, his ego son or Mr. Egan?
I'll ask just a few more, and this'll be it. If we take a phased approach, how attractive is that to federal support?
So I think that if, if the project were phased, I think that, that takes the federal government, perhaps, the process they were going to use, the new start- the process they were going to use, the new starts process. I don't think that's the right program for a phased approach, right? So there might be, depending on how big of a phase you build, how much money is needed, then we can kind of rethink that. So I would think that would be local dollars, right? Maybe some, Go Triangle has the authority to bond, so some borrowing. There are other federal programs, Tiffian, Tiffia and RIF programs, where you can get loans, federally guaranteed loans for your projects. The Bright Line, I think, was, received a, what they call a RIF loan to build their Lauderdale to Orlando piece. They rejected it at the end. They went with private financing, but that was a loan that was offered to them for that project, for Bright Line. So there are, there are other programs. We'll have to figure out, okay, where is that segment going to be? How much is it going to cost? Certainly, then where would be, you know, a lot of questions that have to be answered. Where would be the maintenance facility? Could we buddy up with DOT, for instance, and save some money if we're only going to have a few extra trains? But I think there's a lot of questions that have to be answered, and it would probably require a few months of study to figure out if a segmentation approach is what the elected leaders want to do, how do we accomplish that?
Thank you. I'll close with this. Electric bodies can be very dysfunctional at times. And I'm saying that as part of one. And colleagues, I'm not saying we're dysfunctional. I'm saying we're dynamic. But trying to get electric bodies around the Triangle to get on the same page is, you know, it's kind of like, you know, a camel with a horse designed by a committee.
Right.
This is not going to work out too well. I hope that it would be appropriate to ask you all, as the facilitators of, you know, what we are in need of, regional transit, to look at all of the circumstances. You know, look at the fact that there's a lot of apprehension here in Durham because of, you know, the failed project in the light rail, you know. And also, you know, Wake County's ready, but Wake County has a very different looking tax base than we do.
They do.
You know? And they are much more capable economically than we are. Johnston County have a lot of people working in downtown Durham and living in Johnston County. You know, they're going to be, according to the ridership analysis, they're going to be the greatest benefactors of the project as is. At least what I'm told. And correct me if I'm wrong.
Oh, you're correct. They're going to have, you're looking at almost 4,000 boardings a day out there. But whether you reach Clayton or you build at the Garner, I think folks drive from Johnston County to Garner to jump on the train.
Yeah. So I'm saying all of this to say, as Go Triangle, you know, we are going to need a leader in this. And you guys, that's your role. Your role is to coordinate all of these crazy dysfunctional bodies around the Triangle. Relying on us to get it together is not going to happen. And I think that we're going to, you know, until we put these safeguards in place, you know, until we put the sensors in place that are going to help us identify when we're headed down a red flag road, we may be on another road to disaster, you know. And I hope that that's not going to happen. So I say that to say, get us together. You know, like, you all are in the apex of this, and you're seeing Wake County's perspective, Durham County's perspective, you know, and you see the different governing bodies, and our taxpayers are just saying, look, get me a bus to ride and get me a train to ride. And higher frequency at an affordable rate. So take all of those factors and just bring us a proposal on what's next. Whether it's, if it was light rail again, it would be light rail again. If it's commuter rail, it is what it is. And if commuter rail doesn't work out, then what? You know, give us those options.
Yeah. I would say that commuter rail really is your best bet. Coming from the outside, coming afterward. You know, for me, my experience, the light rail is a good mode of transportation, but it's also a development project, right? A lot of development happens around light rail. Commuter rail is more of a true transportation facility, and it will generate some economic development. But that's your real, that's your regional, your true regional facility is having that commuter rail. And using that North Carolina Railroad corridor, which has been around forever since the 1850s, certainly is something that could be maximized. It's there. It doesn't require other people's property for the most part. You know, I think we can fit in there with a large number of trains. We've done the modeling study. I think, you know, that's where you want to focus the effort. Because even if it's, even if a segment is built, you're always going to be able to expand that segment. And that corridor serves eight out of the 10 major activity centers for employers in the region. No other corridor does that. So that NCR corridor is, I think, vitally important, and its utility for moving people can be multiplied many times.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Thanks for the time. We need to have something soon. We have a lot of jobs coming, maybe about 30,000 or so in the next five years.
Very fortunate.
We need to take advantage and leverage this opportunity. So look forward to hearing.
Thank you.
What's next?
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you all being here today, and we'll see you real soon.
Appreciate it. See you next week.
All right. We now turn to our final presentation for this afternoon. Item number 36 to Excel pilot update, which will be given by Ms. Amber Wade.
Good afternoon, Mayor O'Neill, Mayor Proton Middleton, and city council members. I am Amber Wade, Assistant to Mayor O'Neill, and I am pleased to be with you today to share an update on Excel, Durham's Guaranteed Income Pilot, launched in partnership with Mayors for Guaranteed Income and the Center for Guaranteed Income Research at the University of Pennsylvania. You saw Sarita Hill was here earlier from Step Up Durham. She had to leave for some childcare, so hopefully you will be able to meet her at another date. So Mayor Shul joined Mayors for Guaranteed Income in the fall of 2020. And since being sworn in, Mayor O'Neill has continued this partnership. In December of 2020, Durham was awarded a $500,000 grant to design a local pilot. Through an RFP process in August of 2021, Step Up Durham was chosen as the nonprofit administrator. The last year has been spent designing this pilot for individuals who are returning home from incarceration, and the last six months have included fundraising and implementation. All dollars raised to support the participants' monthly payments are private dollars, and the city is providing funds for Step Up Durham again to administer the pilot. For today's presentation, I will give an overview of the recruitment and onboarding process, review some of the challenges that we have overcome, and our final pilot numbers. So this first slide is a reminder of Durham's pilot goals. Our original goal was to have 115 individuals who would be receiving the $500 monthly deposit and also have a comparison group of 138 individuals who would also be chosen. So to start the recruitment, Step Up Durham opened a pre-screen form on their website. This form was used to build a list of individuals who would be the first to receive the application once it launched. In-person assistance by Step Up's Excel Coordinator was offered to anyone who needed additional support or access to a computer. This form asks four eligibility questions. Do you reside in Durham? Are you 18 or older? Do you have income below 60% AMI? And an income table was provided for individuals to see. And were you released from incarceration after November 1st, 2016? Over 500 individuals responded to this initial pre-screen. You may remember that in January of this year, Step Up Durham received an anonymous donation of $100,000 to allow us to increase the number of individuals that were, that would participate in this pilot. So on January 5th of this year, the pilot application launched. And again, in-person assistance was offered to anyone who needed additional support or access to a computer. The four eligibility questions were asked again, along with additional demographic questions and baseline questions related to the research domains. Once this application closed on January 23rd, and after excluding duplicates, 288 individuals remained. So the 288 individuals were categorized into the following groups. And this randomization was completed by the Center for Guaranteed Income Research. So the four groups were stipend participants, the comparison group, alternates, and those who were not selected. For the onboarding phase, we used multiple outreach strategies to contact the 129 participants. After notification, there was a three-step high-touch process that included benefits counseling for all those who were chosen, as well as a time to sign the various consent forms. There were a number of challenges that we encountered during this notification and onboarding phase. Some of the challenges are documented here. 19 people we were unable to connect with by email or phone. Seven people had returned to incarceration between the time that they were selected and the time of notification. 20 people did not meet residency and incarceration eligibility requirements, and then two declined due to the potential impact on their existing benefits. This slide has our final pilot numbers. Because we did not make our original goal, we were able to take that additional funding and increase the monthly payment to $600 a month. So our final numbers, we have 109 people in that stipend recipient group, and then we were able to identify 138 for the comparison group. We did talk to the Center for Guaranteed Income Research about sort of moving people from the comparison group into the stipend group to increase our number, but we were not allowed to do so. So finally, I'll just share kind of our path forward. Durham is participating in a seven-week online learning collaborative with Mayors for Guaranteed Income and Results for America, focused on best practices for our local storytelling and narrative-building efforts. Each pilot at the end of the sprint is going to be eligible for $10,000 to support a future storytelling project. So if we are selected for that, Step Up Durham will be kind of leading what that future project would be for us. The pilot will continue until March 2023, with all of the deposits occurring on the 15th of each month. You all will continue to see individuals who have agreed to tell their stories and share the impact of this income on television and through media and other outlets. We do expect that our final results from the pilot will come in the spring or summer of 2023. I appreciate your time, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Wade. Something efficient. If you all have any questions for her, just excellent.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good afternoon, Amber. I'm so sorry Sarita couldn't stick around to be with us. So wish she could meet us, but glad we'll have opportunity for her to come for us again sometime in the future. Just, not a question, just, this is really exciting work. My thanks to Councilmember Frelon, who's no longer with us. He's still alive. He's just no longer on the council, and Mayor Shul for allowing us to get this off the ground. This is one of those things that actually, I think, could be called root cause, or going directly to preventative kind of things. It's amazing the number of initiatives proposed dealing with poor people that don't involve giving poor people money. You know, poverty by definition is the lack of resources, lack of money. And we know that this particular population, Mayor O'Neill, has tutored us and really hammered this home on a number of occasions, the particular challenges that this population faces when they come out. We all got stuff going on, which is reason why we want to make this universal at some point for all residents of the country, regardless of, you know, age, race, immigration status, or citizenship status. Because economically secure people make better neighbors. And, you know, it's just such a source of pride for us as a city to be one of the cities around the country participating in this cohort. I said some time ago that I hope that we'll have conversations about ways we can perhaps continue it beyond this pilot. So just putting that out there, that I may be coming back to you guys for more bandwidth to continue this. But just, you know, you really have just been such a superstar in this work and quarterbacked it for us. And just, anytime I get an opportunity to say thanks to you and the team that worked on this publicly, I want to do that. Step Up Durham has been an amazing partner in this. And I've heard informally, because I'm not supposed to talk to them, but I've heard informally, that it's making a difference in people's lives in very tangible ways. And to the naysayers and those folk who sent nasty racist emails and all kinds of stuff, surprise, surprise, they're not spending the money on weed and grape soda and crab legs. They're paying rent. They're buying clothes for their kids. They're paying off bills. Because that's what folk do when they have money. They take care of themselves, and they take care of their families. So thank you. And thank you, council, for allowing this to go forward in this city. And I'm looking forward to hearing those great stories and sharing from the participants. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Just excellent, 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 all the way around. Thank you for staying late tonight. We'll see you tomorrow morning.
Thank you, Amber.
Hope you feel better, too. All right. We now turn our attention to our boards and commissions and task force nominations in the hands of our clerk.
Good evening, everybody. Council has nominated the following residents to the board's committees and commissions. For the Durham City County Appearance Commission, there are two appointments. These are nominations again. Michael M. Bell and Quinton Holloway. Durham Convention Center Authority Appointment, Pashara Black. Durham Sports Commission Appointment, Umar Mohammed. The Housing Appeals Board Regular Member Lawyer is Indra Nilgoosh. Housing Appeals Board Alternate Member Neighborhood Association, Elizabeth Weiner. Human Relations Commission Appointment for six vacancies. The category of African-American person was not settled. There's no consensus on it. We have a four-way tie, or not tie, but there are nominations for Nataskia L. Adams, Tammy Wood, Jamad M. Lane, and Clayton Charles D'Souza. Would you like the breakdown? Go for it, right? Okay, Jamad M. Lane, there are three nominations for him, and that's Mayor O'Neill, Councilmember Freeman, and Councilmember Holsey Hyman. There are two nominations for Tammy Hood. That is Councilmember Johnson and Councilmember Caballero. And then one each for Clayton Charles D'Souza and Nataskia L. Adams. Mr. D'Souza is Councilmember Williams, and Nataskia Adams is Mayor Proton Middleton.
Mayor O'Neill, I have a clarifying question. I thought that that was a reapplication, and that the applicant who reapplied had a 75% attendance. And that would be, is that correct? Okay. As is my standard practice, we get the applicant, if it's a reapplication and the person has been meeting attendance and an active member of the board or commission, I just reappoint.
Okay. Does anyone want to shift their vote?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm willing to change my vote to the reappointment, to the reappointment.
Is there anyone else? Because we need two.
I would as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you. For the position on the Human Relations Commission for Caucasian Non-Hispanic Person, Thomas W. Cadwaller, Christine Cody, and Amelia Jackson were nominated. For Hispanic Person, Maria L. Solis Guzman. Other person, Stacy White Knight. Mayor's appointee, Anita R. Daniels Kenny. For the Mayor's Council for Women, Lydia Mitchell has been nominated. The Mayor's Hispanic Latino Committee Appointment is.
Madam Clerk, I'm sorry. Could you speak up just a little more, please? I'm having.
Sure. On the Mayor's Council for Women, Lydia Mitchell has been nominated. The Mayor's Hispanic Latino Committee Appointment goes to Joshua O. Toth. And the participatory budgeting steering committee appointments, there were six nominations. Michael M. Bell, Rosa I. Kapari. Michael M. Bell, Rosa I. Kapari, Angie C. Jimmerson, Donna L. Kay, Dawn A. Page, and Jada Richardson. And then finally, for the participatory budgeting youth seat. The youth, oop, I think I skipped. I'm sorry, I skipped the participatory budgeting steering committee appointments. Michael M. Bell, Rosa Kapuri, Angela Jimmerson, Donna Kay, Dawn Page, Jada Richardson, and then the youth seat, Jonah Purnell. And finally, the Racial Equity Commission Appointment for at-large resident is Kedrick T. Lowry. So everything has been reached by consensus. That's the end of the report.
Madam Mayor, a quick question. Madam Clerk, has Michael Bell been nominated for two boards? I believe he was applied to the Appearance Commission and another one that you mentioned. And that's not allowed, right?
Right, you can only be on one board. He's been nominated for the City County Appearance Commission, as well as the Participatory Budgeting Steering Committee.
So how do you recommend we resolve that issue? Do we pick one, or do we ask him which one he'd prefer?
We can ask him which one he prefers, and then we can re-advertise.
Okay, that would be great.
Okay.
All right, we will move to other matters, which I think we have two. The first is that the proposed date for staff for our rescheduled work session will be July 26th. July 26th. If you can give me a thumbs up that that may be okay.
Madam Mayor, I may need to be an hour late, but I could come at 2:00.
I'm sorry, say that again.
I may need to come at 2:00 PM instead of at 1:00 PM on the 26th, but I could, I might even make it work.
Is that fine? 2:00, I will find for everybody? 2:00 on July 26th, 2:00 PM, if I can get a thumbs up for everybody. You got our date. All right, Dr. Monique, you okay with that? Well, I'll wait for you. I want to make sure. 2:00, July 26th, 2:00 is the set date. All right, now we turn to Councilwoman Freeman's other matter that she wanted to bring back to our attention.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to just get a consensus of, or to motion that we do allow for our staff to actually reopen the Wheels Fun Park skating rink.
Yes, sir, Madam, Mr. Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I actually resonate with the animating spirit of Councilmember Freeman's. We actually had a discussion earlier today in which I challenged the council that if that was within our purview to do that, if we wanted to. But I also said that I think it's important that staff has an opportunity to do their due diligence. And we can certainly direct staff to bring us back a report, bring us back potential vendors, what that could possibly look like, the indemnity issues, financial impacts, but I think it's just far too premature at this point to just, you know, say we're going to open wheels. I just don't think that would be a responsible message to send today. And we may very well, but I think the first appropriate step would be just to direct staff, as we always do with major decisions, to do some due diligence and do some, you know, some research and bring us a, you know, well-informed view of what that would look like. I certainly would support that, but I think it's way too early to suggest we're going to go into the skating business as a city at this point. We might, but I, you know, I think the staff should have some opportunity to look at this. And that was the thrust of my comments earlier, and it's still the thrust of my comments now. I just don't know what that, I couldn't responsibly vote for that today. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Protem. Councilwoman Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our Parks and Rec staff is in the middle of a pretty extensive engagement process about the use of the Wheels property, as well as the park across the street. And I think that it would be reasonable to allow that engagement process to continue and to conclude before we make any formal decisions as a city and to, for the staff to continue talking to the community. And that's, you know, because the, I fully expect that a strong majority of people in this community will be in favor of renovating Wheels and keeping it in use as a skating rink. Either, you know, either the city runs it, or we bring in a contractor or something. But, you know, I think the commitment to equitable engagement requires that we follow through, and also that the loudest people don't always represent the majority. We've heard from a lot of people about Wheels, and I do in this case believe that they recommend the majority, but I represent the majority, but I think in principle it's important for our commitments to engagement that we actually follow through with the engagement and allow the resident feedback to inform the path forward that we take, rather than making a decision based on the folks who have been able to come to council only. I think that we should, we should wait until we have a full picture of what the community wants before we make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson. Turning it back to Councilwoman Freeman.
Thank you. I was just trying to move us along and just understanding. I want to make sure that I do clarify that the current engagement process does not include the rink. And it hasn't, so if it does, it may have started recently, but I know that there had to be an online campaign to ask people to write in the rink. It was not inclusive of the rink. And so if we're going to restart the engagement process, that's different. But the current engagement process does not allow for the rink to be incorporated into the-
I'm turning to our city manager.
So I would, I'm going to attempt to respond to the engagement. And I know that the engagement, the engagement is ongoing. And from where I said, there has not been any decision made about the assets, community assets, that are going to be ultimately a part of the redeveloped project. I know that Deputy City Manager Johnson was at one of the engagement activities a couple of weeks ago, and I don't, I know we spoke about it. I don't know if you have that specificity. I know Keith Chadwell is in another meeting, but if you wouldn't mind me putting you on the spot.
Good afternoon, Bertha Johnson, Deputy City Manager. I was in an event, at an event about two weeks ago, and there was no specificity around what people could propose. They had lots of pictures of different, you know, recreation activities, and there was an opportunity to write in other activities or other components or amenities you wanted to see at the site. And so it was not explicitly that you could not, there could not be a rink. There was even putt-putt golf, as some folks put that as an option. So it was open-ended, that's my point, that people could actually provide any kind of feedback they want to provide in the course of the engagement process.
I would just say that I think that the skate park, the pool, and a couple of other, the putt-putt, and a couple of others are specifically stated, and so those are the items that are being selected. And the rink, which is what a couple of folks raised as an issue, is not an option. So that there has had to been a coordinated effort in the community to actually push people to actually indicate the rink, which is not the case for the water park, or the slides, or all the other actual photos that are listed there, or what have you. So it's just not as plain as, you know, just going through the engagement process, that's all I'm saying. So I just wanted to make sure that we gave our staff the authority that they needed to actually open the rink. And so whether we vote for it today or not, that's up to the council. But I do think that I put forward a motion. If someone would like to second, that would be great.
Point of order, Councilwoman, this is a work session. We haven't suspended the rules, and Her Honor hasn't called for a motion. This is a discussion, and we're in a work session. We don't vote during work sessions without suspending rules.
That was the request I made at the beginning of the meeting, was to vote.
Suspend the rules.
Was to actually vote.
We don't vote in work sessions.
Okay, wait, 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 wait for one second, please. I see a hand raised by Councilwoman Caballera, and then we have a motion that's been seconded on the floor, but we also have, I believe, a question.
Yeah, I just had some clarifying questions. I want the engagement to continue. If we need to be more clear, that the engagement needs to include the amenity of the skate rink, which is what I've heard consistently. I haven't heard things around the, like, ball pit or the go-karts. I mean, Wheels has a ton of stuff on it. If we need to be clearer in our engagement, I am, you know, I mean, Lord, I think everyone in Durham has skated in that rink. I want to know how many birthday parties there. So I get the love for it. If we need to be clear, if we can direct staff around that, that is an option on the table. I think that that's the positive way forward. I do not feel comfortable directing staff right now in the middle of a very, you know, month-long engagement process, telling, you know, making a decision right now that we're going to open Wheels. I don't even want to think about the liability around that. So my ask of my colleagues is to maybe direct staff to, and if Parks and Rec could just be clear that yes, the skate rink is an amenity that the city is considering keeping and moving from there. Thank you.
All right, I'm just going to look to my attorney for point of order now. That was the question that was raised, but we still have a motion that has been seconded on the floor. I would ask if it is appropriate if I offer a friendly amendment to the motion, or if that's appropriate at this point. We always, we already had a, from Mayor Protem, that there's been some discussion about whether, in fact, that is an appropriate motion, so I'll look to you to clarify.
So the council does not, by its own procedural rules, does not take votes at work sessions unless it chooses? Oh, I'm sorry.
The council, by its own procedural rules, does not typically take a vote on an action item at a work session unless it first suspends the rules to vote on that item, similarly to what you all did with Agenda Item 13 earlier today. I have not heard anyone propose that you all suspend the rules to take action with respect to the Wheels skate park. So you would want to entertain that sort of conversation first, before actually taking an action to give a directive to the administration.
All right. I can make that motion if you'd like. A motion to suspend the rules to take action on the Wheels skate park.
I second if it's that's appropriate.
All right, there has been motion by Councilwoman Freeman that we take, and seconded by Councilwoman Hyman, that we suspend the rules to take action on the Wheels skate park. All those in favor? Did you sign by raising your left hand? All those that is for, all those opposed have the same. All right, that motion passes for three with Councilwoman Hyman, Councilwoman Williams, the mayor, and Councilwoman Freeman voting in favor of suspending the rules.
A motion that we allow for staff to go back and assess and move forward with opening the Wheels skate park, or also the authority for the staff to open Wheels skate park.
I second.
All right, it has been-
Question. What's the motion?
A motion to authorize staff to open Wheels skate park.
Do they lack that authorization? I don't think this motion means anything.
May I offer a friendly amendment to your motion?
Yes.
And that friendly amendment would be that we authorize staff to make inquiries about what it will take to operate the skating rink and come back to us with a report, be it if they operate or choose an outside vendor, and we allow them the time to tell, come back with a report on that. Is that an acceptable amendment?
Yes.
Yeah, and I, yeah.
To be clear, we're asking for an assessment, not-
Right.
Because it's going to have some budgetary cost to it, right, manager?
We're just asking them to open the door, pretty much to see what it will entail to open that rink, even as the city would operate it or not, just to make inquiry and come back with a preliminary report, and then we ought to be able to move from there.
We need a motion for that? I was asking, do we need a motion for it?
No, I offered a friendly amendment, and my friendly amendment is that we make inquiry, direct the staff to make inquiry as to what that would look like to open that rink.
I don't think we need to vote on that. I think we, I think we could just ask the manager to do that. And also, I think that's already part of the plan.
We're talking about in the interim between, from what I understand, there is going to be a, possibly a four-year interim period between the planning and the actual final plans of the entire site. So we are trying to see if there's a way during that interim at some point in time if we could possibly open the rink, since you have such a large gap of time. I know there's going to be community engagement, but what do we do in that interim period? Is there something we can do, but just for them to make inquiry? Is there a possibility of us opening the skating rink sooner than the master plan?
Madam Manager, could you give us some guidance?
Whenever I'm-
Okay.
So I, we certainly can, that's what we do. That's what the administrators do. When we are given direction to go and evaluate something and bring you back information and options, that is what we would do. The only thing I would add here is the expectations for staff as to when that, you know, when we should be involved in that. Is that, you know, immediately and as soon as possible, or some other timeframe? Because we have to, you know, we have to, we want to meet your expectations, and it would be good for us to know what, you know, what that is, even for this evaluative period.
And I really want to leave that date certain, open for you all to talk with your staff, since we have so many moving parts at this point. Y'all are in the middle of budget. I'm really conscious about adding something else to people who are already under other deadlines. So I really would like to ask you all to bring us a date back when we come back for our next meeting and have a proposed date, is what would be my suggestion, rather than us give you a date today. Let us give you all an opportunity to think about what that entails. Councilwoman Freeman?
And I'm just trying to give you the latitude, I was trying to give you the latitude to kind of, if it is a huge, you know, like, jump out there, that's different than if it's just as simple as, you know, RFP and what have you in 30 days or whatever. So whether it's one or the other, I think the dates or however long would be different. But that's based on the findings of our staff looking into it.
I'm just trying to be cognizant of the fact that, you know, this is brand-new territory, and they are already in the midst of lots of other things. So if we can give them time to kind of figure out what that lay of the land is and come back with a proposed date as to, they know what the question is now. Can we open that rink? If sometime sooner than the master plan may allow, there's going to be a gap. And what that looks like, and if they can have time to figure out what that date, if what date is reasonable for them to be able to answer that question. I would prefer that they have time to think about it, rather than we set a date today for them to come back. And because they're really efficient about that stuff, though. I just don't want to ask them to do that today. Council, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I appreciate your clarity and leadership on this. I think everything that you asked is well within your purview to just ask, as a council, and we've done. So I would, for the sake of the institutional integrity, I would just suggest that the motion be allowed to die. I think it would, we, for us to put the imprimatur of the city through a fully binding legal vote just to ask the staff to research something is a threshold we just simply do not need to cross.
I defer to you. I'm good with it.
Well, that's my, yeah, that's-
I think all of us are good with it.
Staff asked for us to vote for them to give them authority? I didn't hear that. I'm sorry.
Do you need a vote? We can ask. Do you need a vote?
We do not.
All right.
At this point, we do not. At this point, we do not.
Thank you, we have, we have changed that into an ask, and at this point, we are now going to settle our agenda. Yes, we are.
For our June 22nd city council meeting, we have for consent Items 1 through 12, Item 14, Item 16, Item 19 through 35, and Item 44. For GBA, we have Items 15 and 17, and for GBA Public Hearings, Items 38 through 42.
I would entertain a motion to settle our agenda.
Second.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Freeman, seconded by Councilman Williams. We would raise your left hand for those who are in agreement. Those who would like to say no have the same right. I believe that passes unanimously with the six that we have remaining. Are there any other items to come before the council? Hearing none, we are adjourning this meeting and this day that has been full of work for our citizens at 16. We're city strong. Have a good evening, everybody. Have a good evening, everybody, it's great work.